April 3, meeting of the planning board. Why don't we start then with, I think, just to see if Jennifer can be here. Why don't we start with the annual town meeting warrant article? Which is, so, just before we start, so, just for the record and for everyone, we've renumbered, some of the warrant articles got renumbered based on numbering, having nothing to do with the planning board, but with other articles. So, if you see number, different numbers, don't worry about it. It just means that they've been updated, okay? And we just updated the agenda to reflect that. Nothing different on the agenda in terms of substance. So, we'll start with annual town meeting warrant article number 12. Petitioner Tom Zarico, street acceptance, Great Lake Lane. And what I'd like to say, Jean, if you could just update us where we're at. And then, I think we'd like to maybe have a discussion about whether this should be a citizen-sponsored, or maybe it might be better as a planning board-sponsored, if everything's completed, so.
So, were some discussions from the manager's office and the board? The warrant has been updated to be a planning board-sponsored article because of the fact that when Tom first brought this application, and it was a little bit late in the process, and there wasn't a high degree of confidence based on Conservation's first review of the project. However, since then, Tom has worked with DPW and Conservation. Both have submitted memos for tonight's packet with favorable recommendations. Town council has submitted a memo stating he has met all requirements for street acceptance. And the Board of Health, because this is on water sewer, have also submitted favorable recommendations. DPW has approved the street layout plan, as well as the Asbilly Plan for the subdivision. So, we got to a point where, if everything was perfect at the big start of this, that I would have been recommending to the planning board that you sponsored this article. And given it's a subdivision, typically, it is sponsored that way. So, I would recommend favorable action. The memos are all in the packet from each of the required departments. Tom is here to speak to it. If you have any questions, the citizen's petition was submitted as well, as a warrant article request.
So, are those both, do they both have current numbers for warrant articles?
Yeah, so, the warrant article, so, the planning board report that you have a hard copy of, has the article as number 12. And this is copied straight out of what is the current draft warrant. So, it is the same language, however, being sponsored by the planning board. Should you approve that tonight?
And where's the citizen one?
The citizen one is not currently in the draft one.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was trying to ask. All right.
So, the plan, should you vote favorable action tonight, is the street layout meeting would proceed to the board of selectmen on April 9, which is next Monday. They have to approve the street layout prior to town meeting as well.
Do you know off the top of your head, what percentage of the street acceptances are sponsored by the planning board versus the applicant? Because my recollection is that just about always came from the applicant. I mean, I don't have a problem with this at all, but I just didn't know whether it was our practice. I don't recollect it was our practice ever to sponsor these. Maybe, you know, I have a faulty memory, but.
Yep, no, typically, it isn't. Stanton Way was just in 2016, and they came early enough that I could fully recommend that it made all the, it achieved all the hurdles. So, Stanton Way was the planning board, and Hitching Close Road that year was the planning board as well. It was a little different circumstance.
Okay. But, we generally do have, the point is, the process starts with the applicant. If the applicant doesn't make a move to push for street acceptance, it's not going to happen at all.
Right, they come forward with required information. And then, based on that required information and department review, it should be, the process is recommended to start in December, and if it were to decide. In December, we would have a good feeling from each of the departments whether this hurdle would be met. And then, planning board would typically sponsor the article. The ones, I have looked back at them. The last one that I saw that wasn't was Empire Drive, which was 40B. So, it wasn't, it wasn't permitted through planning board, and that was by the developer.
Yeah, okay.
Does anyone have any questions?
So, I make a motion then to recommend favorable action on Article 12.
Second.
And to sponsor it too, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, would you, would it be your plan then to withdraw your article at the town meeting?
Yeah, that, I'll formally do that in the morning, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, and that we, wasn't any confusion. I didn't want to, I didn't want to do that first on any sort of assumption that the process would go a certain way.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, why don't we go to, so, we'll go to 128 Dale Street, but just, before you get up, let's just make sure. So, Chris, you were here for, were you here, were you here for the 128 Dale Street?
Was this?
When did it, two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
It was opened at the last meeting. Remember, it wasn't on the agenda, but we did take it because it was.
Because I was here at the last meeting. I wasn't here at the meeting before that.
Then you were here.
I was, I was not here at the meeting that the Historical Society was here.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Which was two times ago.
All right, so, correct. All right, so, then, I think we'll authorize you to vote on, on 128 Dale Street. Anyway, we have five members voting. And if we could just make sure we note that it was, Chris was voting on this one with the authority of the board. Okay, so, let's go to 128 Dale Street. Continued public hearing, watershed special permit, map 37B parcel 8. Applicant Stephen Mason. Jean, if you could tell us about that, and then, or Monica, if you could tell us.
Turn this over to Monica, yep.
Monica, if you could tell us about this, and then, Mr. Mason.
Great, so, we are hearing 128 Dale Street, map 37B lot 8. It's entirely located in the watershed protection district overlay. We have the application applicant Steve Mason here for a watershed special permit. The applicant seeks to remodel the existing single-family dwelling with an addition of a single car garage, car park, master bedroom. The portions of the work are in the non-disturbance zone. Just to give you an update on variances, the ZBA granted variances for both front and side setbacks on February 13. And I left a copy of the variance in your packet. Conservation issued a negative determination of applicability on May 28. You have a copy of that also in your packet. And in that determination, they required the site contractor reviewed the determination. They also required compost or bark mulch erosion controls to be installed prior to a pre-construction meeting. And also, the installation of wetland markers. In terms of department review, DPW conducted the storm water review. And changes to the plan have been made according to that. So, he signed off on, on the plans which reflect his changes. Building had no concerns, health had no concerns, police had no concerns, but they did say that if there's any work blocking the flow of traffic, a detail is required. And so, before you is the updated site plan, which reflects the, the review conducted by DTW's John Borgesi. And I will bring that up a little. And, Mr. Mason, if you would like to have any additional information you'd like to share with the board, or?
No, you pretty well covered it. I don't have any other information. It was just approved by Conservation last week.
So, could you? First of all, where on Dale Street are you exactly?
You know that one-way portion, it's right on the corner of Barrington and Dale?
Okay, okay, got it, got it.
So, actually, yeah, you can see it out there, Barrington Place, yeah.
It's a long story, right?
Okay.
Right, so, we're actually planning on, there's a, shown again, close to the wetlands is an existing driveway that we're, want to get rid of, and make it a permeable surface, you know, some sort of landscaping there. So, the driveway is actually going to be farther from the wetlands, and it will be pitched in alongside of that, per the town engineer, is a infiltration trench.
And is there, let's see, and so, you're changing the driveway, you're adding a garage?
Single car garage, yep, with a carport in front, correct.
And expand.
And we're expanding a master bedroom.
Master bedroom, okay, got it. The drainage from the new driveway, how is that going, how are you going to manage that?
It's, it's going to be sloped to, towards an infiltration trench on the right-hand side of that driveway. That was per the town engineer.
Okay, okay. Got it, okay. And are you adding any drainage on, are you adding anything to the roof? Like, are you going to have any drainage from the roof?
Well, it'll be gutters along the roof.
Okay. Okay.
What is the size of the addition?
In square feet?
The size of the addition in square feet? I'm sure it's in here.
I could do the math if I wanted to, I suppose. I was hoping you just had it quickly.
Uh, let's see.
About 500 square feet?
Well, it's adding about 876 square feet of roof runoff, but that's pitched, of course. I have it in the application, I'm sure.
In this instance, are they, is the applicant limited in terms of percentage? I couldn't remember whether that was an overall rule, or just within, like, say, the non-disturbance zone?
So, this was reviewed by the building inspector, and it met the, I think, for, because the house itself was, is 1,200 square feet. The addition is less than 50% of that, I think that's what it was.
Right, so, you can increase it 50%.
Right.
That's, that's a good question, Ed.
Yeah, so, it was reviewed by the building inspector, and he okayed it.
But, what is it like, so, the size is 1,200, the addition was how many square feet? You said 350?
Yeah, the, 568 square feet is the addition.
That includes the garage?
That includes, I'm not sure if that includes the, oh, it must include the garage, yeah. That'd be a big master bedroom.
Be a big bedroom, yeah.
But, not the carport?
It does not include the carport, that's correct.
Any other questions? Peter, anything?
This one, again, how far from the wetland is the work going to be?
So, you can see the 100-foot line, so, most of the construction will be outside of 100 feet from the wetlands. Some of the drive, some of the new driveway will be within that, and the corner of the rear expansion will be within the 100 feet. The landscaping, of course, will be much closer, right?
And, will you need hay bales or anything like that?
Yeah, according to Conservation, yep, that was one of the conditions. I don't know if she said hay bales, or some sort of sock or something, but.
Compost or bark mulch erosion controls are necessary, according to Conservation.
Okay, good. So, how far is this from the stream that runs across the Dale and then into the lake?
I'm not aware of any stream.
Yeah, this is the tributary that runs through, through the cemetery, and then, across Salem, and across Dale. Kind of parallels Marble Ridge, and then goes into the lake by the hatch, so, just curious how far this is from that stream.
Oh, so, that's on the other side of Marble Ridge?
Right. Just doing a little Google thing here.
We can bring up the aerial, Peter.
It looks like it's 1,000 feet.
Okay, so, you have it?
I'm just looking on a Google map.
Yep.
And the wetland you're referring to is on what side of the house here, just or?
It's on the right side of the house.
As we're looking at it in the map there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, there's the old railroad track, and, okay, there's the stream just past the railroad track, right there. And then, it comes down to the lower right, down that way, yeah. It keeps coming, there it is.
Right over here.
Yeah, so.
So, you want to measure from there?
Keeps going, yeah, at least, yeah. Okay.
You're right, 930 feet is a rough measure from the stream to the pool?
Yeah. So, is there anything?
Nope.
There that?
Within 325 feet from the wetland?
Yep.
Puts it in the non-disturbance zone. The lot was created prior to 1994.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question, because I just don't understand the language? Are they, does the Conservation Commission voted on the 28th to issue a negative determination of applicability? See, everybody's got troubles with that word. Does that mean that they don't?
They don't, they do not need to go through an order of conditions with Conservation?
Okay, so, it just doesn't pertain to them? Okay.
So, I just had one more question. Just out of curiosity, in addition to the wetland, do you know that your property is also within the lake watershed?
I do, that's why I'm here.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
We've had conversations with Mr. Mason since December, to be honest, so, because of, he had to go to the ZBA as well, so, and Conservation, and he wanted assurance from ZBA prior to filing his application with the planning board.
Great, thank you. Sure.
Anybody else? Okay, any member in the public?
Do you have any comments?
All right, all right, so, if you don't want to make the motion then to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so, why don't we, is everyone comfortable doing a decision on this today? Does anyone need more time?
Do you want me to vote?
Jen, you weren't, Jennifer, you weren't here to start. Do you want to vote on this, or?
I'm happy to, if I can, Chris.
All right, all right, Chris, you're still in.
Okay.
To try to sneak out.
He missed like one minute, I guess.
Yeah.
Sorry. That traffic from Boston, anyway.
Okay, so, why don't we review the decision, the draft decision? So, just a question, do we normally put in, and I'm just in the procedural history, that a, when the public hearings took place? So, we go from, you know, things were submitted, application was reviewed, and then, we go to a motion, but we probably should put in that public hearings took place on such-and-such dates.
Okay.
Did I miss that?
Right above the procedural history.
It's open on March 20, closed by, okay, on April 3, okay, yeah, so, that is there, so, that's, okay, thank you. Can we put that in the procedural history?
Okay, so, you go by.
It's on the front page, and it's a right-hand corner as well, the date of the variance.
Yes, so, that's great. If we could just, yeah, so, we could just keep it, the front page is great, and then, if we could just move that section up above, just into the procedural history. So, I was just looking for it there, but, yeah, great, good catch, Jen, thank you.
Would you like that to come, let me see?
Where, I guess it would come in between 5 and 6?
Okay, so, I'll, I'll insert the, the hearing dates as a new point 6, and 6 will become 7.
And so forth.
As, number 8, under the finding of facts, is it really true that the front setback is 2 feet, or the front setback is 2 feet less than the statutory minimum?
Yes.
Then, is the 2 feet variance?
20, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, I figured.
So, for front setback of 28 feet?
Yeah, yeah. It's really a variance of 2 feet from the thing, as opposed to a setback of 2 feet, yeah.
I will change that to a setback variance of 2 feet, is that?
Yeah, that's fine.
And I'll also alter the side setback variance of 14.8. I'll correct that number. 31.
I have a question, I hope it's not off-topic, just reading number 31 regarding the landscape plan, and I just see a note about removing the driveway and planting shrubbery and landscaping, et cetera, but, do we have standards as to, in a wetland or near a wetland area? Because I know there's invasive species.
Yeah, so, usually, it's native species. It was specified.
One of the order conditions from Conservation was that Jennifer approves.
All right.
But, we can specify it must be native in here.
Okay.
And then she, and then, yeah, and then she is very good at picking out which native species, so, we always verify them.
Maybe we can get our motion to?
I will make a motion to approve the watershed district special permit for 128 Dale Street.
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Somebody give Chris a fist bump.
Okay, including Ms. Allen, 5-0. All right. Thank you. Thank you for working so well with all our boards and commissions, appreciate that.
And the experience, for sure.
He didn't say good.
I noticed that, I noticed that. Okay, why don't we move on to 660 Great Pond Road? So, this is Rolling Ridge Retreat. Now, they came to us previously to have an informal conversation. I think the suggestion of the board was to come back to have a formal public hearing, which we're doing tonight. I think, based on time, they'd like us to vote on this tonight, if we can, so, if we have all our questions answered, I'm certainly happy to do that. If we have more questions, then we have more questions. So, why don't we, why don't we start with that lofty introduction?
Again, this is 660 Great Pond Road, map 63 lot 11, located entirely in the watershed protection district overlay. Property is zoned R1, and our applicant is the Rolling Ridge Retreat Conference Center. And tonight, we have Dr. Reverend Lawrence J. and his engineer, Janice Bucchi, from Andover Consultants. The project seeks to pave and repave an existing driveway which connects the parking lot with the visitor's center. And this is a watershed special permit. DPW conducted the storm water review for this project, and John Borgesi asked that we add a note to, to the plans and the decision. And the note says, "A note shall be added to the decision plan or condition of the permit that the applicant shall be responsible for the long-term operation and maintenance of the proposed grass swales in accordance with Massachusetts Storm Water Handbook. The maintenance shall include, at a minimum, semi-annual inspections, mowing of the swales, removal of sediment debris annually, repair, reseating as necessary." So, departments reviewed this as well, Conservation reviewed, and I put her information in your packet. Let me see. Her comment was, "All work is to remain outside of the 100-foot buffer zone. Erosion controls shall be installed at the 100-foot buffer zone to be, ensure that the work, that the areas are protected. The heavy equipment needed for paving is likely to degrade the quality of the gravel road within the buffer zone. Erosion controls shall be installed where equipment shall pass through the buffer zone, to be sure there's no construction-related impacts. Other than that, there are no concerns from building, no concerns from health. Police had no concerns, however, if there's any, once again, if there's any work blocking traffic, a detail will be required." And, of course, DPW said that, once this note was added to the drawings, that he had no further concerns. And I'll leave that open for you to.
Thank you, Monica.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Dennis Grecian, engineer with Andover Consultants. With me tonight is also Dr. Lawrence J. from Rolling Retreat. He's the executive director. We were previously, before the board, in late February, requested a waiver. We had an informal discussion requesting a waiver from the watershed special permit. We were encouraged by the board to submit the full application, which we have at this point. The plan is essentially the same. The proposal is to pave two portions of the existing driveway, which right now is in a various states of disrepair. There's some paved portions remaining, much of it is broken asphalt or packed gravel and some crushed stone, which is brought in to, to try to repair the driveway to the, to the extent practicable. The two portions would be the first portion of the driveway off of Great Pond Road, which kind of dips down, which the Conference Center has seen some visitors stuck in during winter and spring months. And the second portion would be the, this leg here, which leads to the visitor parking area. There's a Y there, and one leads to visitor parking, one leads to the employee maintenance area, so, trying to get the visitors where they're supposed to be going. The center portion, which is within 100 feet of a wetland, we have avoided at this point. In the event that the Retreat Center would like to pave that, we would file with the Conservation Commission. We'd also come back before the board for, for another watershed special permit for that work. We did revise the plan that was submitted to the board to add a note regarding the operation and maintenance of the grass swale, which will run alongside the paved portion of this work. That's the ongoing maintenance of that grass swale, the mowing, the removing of clippings, pretty regular maintenance for a grass swale. One of the items that we discussed at the last meeting was the conservation restriction, which we did look into, and it does not restrict the paving of that driveway. So, I think that answered one of the questions that the board had at the February meeting.
How did you come to that conclusion, that it doesn't?
We read the restriction, and we just, we also discussed it with Jennifer.
I discussed it with her as well, it does not restrict.
That it doesn't cover this driveway, or that?
Doesn't restrict the paving of the driveway.
Because I'm, okay, so, I'm reading it right now, and it's like, number 12 is driveway, so, I'm just wanting to make sure that we're talking about the same thing.
And there's another section, if you keep reading down, there's an exception.
So, so, Jean, you actually looked at the conservation restriction of the property from, that was signed with the state?
I, no, I talked to Jennifer about their concern, and she said that the paving was allowed in the Conservation. Jennifer did look at it.
She looked, but, okay, I mean, this, to me, is a big deal. If we haven't renewed it ourselves, or town councils reviewed it, to make sure it's consistent, make. it makes me a little bit nervous.
Aton, are you reading it?
I mean, in part of...
Aton has it right here.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'm just reading the...
So generally, it says you can't do construction, but it does say driveways. The right to pass and repass, pave, maintain, operate, discontinue, use, repair, restore existing driveways at their current width, including the historic carriage drive located on the premises, substantially in their present configuration and width, as reasonably necessary for the continued use of the property as contemplated hereunder. And then it talks about any relocated driveway should be located, designed, and installed in a manner that will minimize negative impacts.
Okay, so that's, yeah.
So that's what it's, so as long as it's...
I think that's fine. Is it the exact same width as what we had?
We're proposing right now to match the width exactly. I think when it's built, it will actually be narrower than what's existing.
Do you remember off the top of your head how many feet it is?
It varies. I think there's eighteen-feet spots, and there's some where it narrows down to about fourteen feet, but it does vary in width. So that was one of the questions, and I'm glad we were able to...
Right, and that's, it does, there is an exception, I just wanted to make sure that it fit within that exception. Okay, excellent.
So generally, that's it. So we have, we have submitted the water quality special, or excuse me, the watershed special permit, the narrative. And if there's any questions about that submission from the board, we'd be happy to answer them.
Since, since this is a new public hearing, can you actually just briefly describe the project again? I know we went over it before, but just for anyone else who might be interested.
Sure. So the proposal, there's an existing driveway that leads from Great Pond Road to the conference center, which is closer to Lake Cocheech. Right now, the driveway, which was at one point paved, is either asphalt, broken asphalt, packed gravel, or crushed stone, which was brought in by the conference center to, in an attempt to repair the driveway. Again, the various lines shown on this plan, the red line is four hundred feet from Lake Cocheech, so all the work will be outside of the four hundred feet from the lake. However, we are within three hundred and twenty-five feet, the non-discharge zone of wetlands located within the watershed. The yellow lines here show the hundred-foot buffer from the, from the wetlands, which are flagged on the site. All work will be greater than a hundred feet from the wetlands, so we're not requiring a filing with the conservation commission at this point. In the event that the conference center does decide to pave in that center portion, a filing with the conservation commission would of course be required.
Yeah, those are isolated, well, that's in the middle, right? They're not contiguous to anything.
These two are, these two are isolated, this may be bordering. But yeah, these two are isolated, this is isolated, this is of course bordering. This one up here is isolated as well. So the, the proposal in front of you is to pave two separate portions of the driveway. The first portion leading off of Great Pond Road is approximately forty-nine hundred square feet. That area, it dips down to the, to the wetlands. Some visitors are getting stuck there at various points of the year. The second portion would be the second leg, approximately eight thousand square feet, to define where the visitors go. This is the visitor parking area. Additionally, there'd be grass swales alongside both sides of the paved, excuse me, along one side of the paved driveway. It'd be along this portion, sloping down to the wetlands, again, sloping down this way to the wetlands. That swale would be about a six-foot wide grass swale, is a typical grass swale to provide additional water quality treatment as well as recharge. The work could be protected through state hay bales during construction. I know Jennifer had also given a comment to the planning board that areas where large construction vehicles may be passing should also be protected with hay bales, which the applicant would be, be happy to do. The... That's generally the project. It's pretty straightforward, there's not going to be any changing of the topography, just digging out what's there, bringing in good subbase, then repaving the driveway, so it can be passed.
Of the existing material, would you dig out to put in the new subbase?
What the subbase we're proposing is ten inches of crushed gravel, two inches of the subbase, and one inch of top course. I don't know what can be reused of the material that's there right now.
And what is there, say, the portion adjacent to Great Pond Road, what is, what is that material now? Is it? It's broken up pavement?
Yeah.
And stone.
And stone.
We may have some, some pictures that we can pull up.
And then the portion closer to the visitor's center, how would you, how would you state the quality of the pavement or the drive?
Quality of pavement at the visitor, at the parking area is, is asphalt is fine. It's broken gravel, broken asphalt up here, and it starts to kind of degrade as you get down in some of these more challenging areas.
And then there's one area right about here where there's actually no asphalt, and it's just dirt.
Right. Yeah, I think I just saw a picture you flashed out, Jean.
So this is some of the crushed stone that was brought in to try to define the driveway, as well as help some of the visitors navigate the driveway?
So this, okay, this is, this is looking up towards Great Pond Road?
Right, yep.
And that's a hill that people are getting stuck on during the winter months.
And that would be a portion that would be, would be paved, this first portion here?
What type of pave?
Two minutes asphalt.
It looked like in the last picture Jean had up that we had before us, that there was almost a berm on the, on the side. Is that correct, that like the road is?
There's a small swale on the other side where he's...
Yeah, there is.
It's not a berm.
No.
It's not an intentional berm.
Okay. I was just wondering how water would get into the swale if...
Yeah, so that, so that will be picked up and regraded. We're proposing a, it's two percent cross slope across the paved driveway.
And the existing swale will be enhanced.
Right, so there is a swale you can see there, it's about one foot wide. I don't know if it's, if it was natural or man-made, but it will be, it'll be widened and more defined.
So do you, what did we have in terms of stormwater review or?
The town engineer.
I just added one note, right?
Yep.
So normally, we have under special conditions a restriction on the type of sealant being used on pavement. But I don't see that in this case. Is there a reason that we didn't include that? And also, we normally have notation of the type of fertilizers, and I didn't see that either. Am I missing something there?
No, I believe that restriction is already in place with other permits, but the tar-based sealant can be added to a deed restriction. Similar to the one on one-twenty-eight Dale Street, you can add that same condition.
Yeah.
Nineteen, isn't that fertilizer, some of the deals we, we see that organic sort of is in that?
I was looking under special conditions. Oh, it's just in a different section. Yeah, that is there, yeah, but not the sealant.
So that should probably be under special conditions?
Yeah, I was thinking so. And maybe the, maybe the pavement sealant is in a different spot as well.
I don't think that's, I don't think those definitely can, will be placed under special conditions. I can read that point number fourteen.
And so are you aware of the fertilizer restrictions for the property?
Yes.
In terms of the nitrogen phosphorus?
Yes.
Have you also had, I know you're fairly new and welcome again. Have you also had a chance to take a look at the lake usage regulations? They were recently updated.
No, not yet.
Yeah.
And I'll probably take a look at it and take up your offer to get together with you as well.
If, if of interest, but it's on the website.
Okay, great.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Well, thank you.
If I may, to put in truth, a slightly extraneous topic, but I don't mean to put you on the spot, but since you're here, I think it's, it's worth bringing up. Is, is part of the conservation restriction between the town and Rolling Ridge, the town has rights of access to the property, and there's supposed to be a parking area right by the old entryway. And I haven't noticed it, but I've been told that that has been cordoned off and that there's no public access, and there's a sign that says it's private there. And maybe I'm getting bad data, but that's what I, what I was told. So I, I want to make sure, maybe over this, course of this next year, we should work on putting together the final parking and the access, because I think we were very sensitive to the concerns of the prior director of maintaining the privacy of the estate while still allowing some limited public use that the town paid for. It's a balance, but I, I want to make sure that the proper balance and there is access for the public in the ways that were originally contemplated. And my concern is, you know, again, I may be wrong with my facts, but that's, that's what I was told by a number of people.
And so the main, so the old entrance road is, is not blocked off.
Okay.
It's, it's open. In the main area, in terms of where the paving is going to be, we actually have a sign that says private property.
Right, and that's as it should be. But I think we, it might make sense over the next year, maybe as part of this, is to put in the small parking for the town, put some signage in where the town access is and where it ends, so that it's, it's clear going forward, so.
Is that, is that the portion of the road that's immediately adjacent to the edge of the golf?
To the edge of the country club, yeah.
Yes, it is, huh?
Yeah, yeah, which is the, yeah, that's the scene, I guess that's the original entryway.
The original entryway, that's correct. And it's, but it's, there's no rope there, and it's...
Okay, good, that's good, I'm glad to hear that.
If anything, there's some trees down, and we were working with the Boy Scout troop to be able to remove parts of it.
Oh, good, yeah, they would be the ones who would do it, excellent, so that's great. It looks like you made some progress, and most of the information I got is wrong, so I'm glad to be disabused of my errors, so. Yeah, great, thank you.
No, I appreciate you bringing up the fact that the parking lot, it does need to go in, and we're just looking into that. And I know that requires a whole nother layer of responsibilities, as well as paving, and so.
Yeah, okay, great.
I also noticed last year, I think it was early spring last year, that there was some debris in the water along the shoreline. And the Boy Scout troop cleared it out. I happened to be going by when they were doing it.
Oh, good.
They did a great job, from what I saw.
And then we also had Merrimack College come during, during their service day, and they also came to help clear the lakefront as well.
Great, thank you.
We do have regular groups that come in to help us with that property.
Thanks.
Right. Is there any members of the public that want to make a comment? Seeing none, we have a...
I have a, I have one question about that condition twenty-three requirement for an ASBIL showing location of structures, curb cuts, and sparking parking spaces prior to the release. Would a, would an ASBIL be required for this instance? Doesn't, it's just another expense for the, for the applicant? I know typically it'd be...
Maybe just the width and length of the paved areas that were completed.
Okay.
Because the restriction does specify no increment in the width, so. I think that would be appropriate, because I have a sense that you'll be coming back to do that middle section at some point when the funds are there. And so we should have an idea of, to let them with what was done already.
Okay, yep, thank you.
I just have to comment, someone was driven down this driveway many times. I'm so happy you're, you're going to be able to make some repairs, or hopefully you will be doing that, because it's, it's rough.
It's rough, yes.
It definitely needs work, has for a long time, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to oppose the public hearing on six-sixty Great Pond Road Watershed District Special Permit.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone uncomfortable with voting on this today? All right, so why don't we look at the draft decision?
So can we add the sealant that is perhaps similar to the special condition in the previous one? I think it was eighteen...
Yes.
Eight, something along that line.
Yes, as well as the fertilizer requirement as well.
Well, the fertilizer we have, but maybe it's number nineteen, maybe move that up to special conditions?
Okay.
Yeah.
And again, if we could put the public hearing date just in the procedural history, that'd be great. Can you just move that down?
Yes. The condition, this is a condition number eighteen, we're putting in the procedural script.
And is the note from engineer in the spec, is that in the decision, the note that we had?
Oh, the note is already added to the plans, so the plans already goes to that thing.
All right, excellent.
They added it before the...
In the fact section, should we make a note to the extent that we recognize that the, the repave will be of the same dimensions or very close to it of what is existing? Because we're, we're really basing our decision based on the fact that we're not expanding...
And actually, just to add, to add to that, that based on our review, it's in compliance with the conservation restriction.
Yeah, okay, so I'll create number nine, and then just move those other ones down.
I've got a nitpicky comment. In all the other special permits, I've seen the bond section is bold. So the number fifteen, it's not bold. I don't know if that matters, but what's a nitpicky?
This, this will be bold as well.
That was, that was nitpicky and bold. Nice. Okay, get a motion?
Make a motion for the watershed special permit, six-sixty Great Pond Road, to be approved based on the amendments offered this evening.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's approved, five oh.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Jean, would it be a good time to go back to the top, capital improvement plan?
I think so, yeah.
So maybe we can do, just in terms of a batting order, maybe we can do, while we have Mr. Mailer here, maybe we can do the capital improvement plan, and maybe we could go down to fill articles fifteen and sixteen after that regarding the building heights and B-two rezoning, and maybe hit the community preservation committee update appropriation from community preservation fund. Those seem like all things we can get done with Mr. Mailer here. All right, so... I think these, you're more than welcome to stay, but I think those all kind of flow nicely together. So why don't we, why don't we start?
I advised Eric Cifori, I felt around eight days fifteen, and he is coming for that as well, but I think the timing will be fine.
So cue this up well.
Yes.
All right, so we'll start with annual town meeting warrant, article twenty-four, appropriation capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2019. Why is this here? capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2019. Why is this here? What do we got?
Yeah, that's a great question. The, so article nine of the town charter requires that the town manager on an annual basis prepare a five-year capital plan, and provide that or present it to the board at least 150 days before the annual town meeting, the Board of Selectmen, that is. This year, that was presented on February, excuse me, on December 18th. The selectmen take the action within 30 days to approve or amend or approve and move it off to the finance committee. By practice, what we traditionally do is the selectmen approve it on the night they receive it and reserve the right to make any amendments within the next 30 days, so that the finance committee has some time to take action on it. The finance committee also identified under article nine is responsible for reviewing that and making a recommendation back up to town meeting. They completed their work in terms of the review on February 13th of this five-year capital plan. I just left the finance committee meeting earlier tonight, in which they voted favorable action. And there is certainly sometimes a municipal government that has this sort of redundant process to it. So on February 13th, they approved the plan. Tonight, they vote favorable action on the plan they approved. And we see that a little bit through a number of these processes, right? There is no defined role in the charter for the planning board, but it certainly has been as it relates to the capital improvement plan, but it certainly is the custom to present that to the group and make them aware of what's going on in terms of the capital plan. All departments received packages from the finance director, Lynn Savage, in October, asking that they submit requests for five-year capital improvement projects. Minimum spending limit is $25,000 with a useful life of at least five years. We have upped that limit over the last several years, and we tell anybody that submits a project that has a value of less than $50,000, they must include that in their operating budget. It's a way of reducing overall debt service and not capitalizing everything we purchase. So a police car, as an example, finds its way into an operating budget and doesn't find its way into the capital improvement plan. This year, five-year capital improvement plan calls for about $29.6 million in funding on the general fund side. Approximately $24 million of that will be bonded over the five-year period, the most immediate year being fiscal 19, which is really what town meeting takes an action on, is nearly $9 million, just under $9 million. The centerpiece of that is nearly $6 million for a brand-new senior center, which is project seven of seven on our facility master plan, probably one of the more successful facility plans in the county over the last couple of decades. Our ability to pull off seven projects really transforms some of the places that we work in. The senior center is last, but I would argue in many ways the best project. It allows us to accommodate a growing senior population and a population that has been in a space which was not originally designed for them, quite frankly, served several other purposes over the last couple of decades. There was an original proposal to expand the center on-site. It had a couple of limitations. The first is that if you've been out back during sort of the midweek, especially during bingo times, parking doesn't seem sufficient for bingo, let alone eating up another 12 or 15 spots in this parking lot by expanding further into the parking lot as part of the expansion. Two, again, the building was never designed for a senior center, so it has some limits in terms of what it ultimately could be from programmatic perspective. As you know, as other things before the planning board, we are seeking to have the senior center built on a site on Sutton Street as a function of a partnership with MenCo in terms of a development that they're seeking to build on Sutton Street as well. We think that facility with about a 9,300 square foot footprint, likely to be one and a half stories, possible build-out of the rest of the second floor over time, depending on the expansion of the senior population, will ultimately be about 13,000 to 14,000 square feet. Facility here would have been significantly less. So that's the centerpiece of year one of the general fund aspect of the project. We annually make contributions to, for instance, playgrounds in partnership with the CPC. Annually, we put $50,000 into the capital plan, and generous support of the CPC for about $100,000 a year. This year, $200,000 toward playground projects, so that we can replace and upgrade all of our playgrounds, something that we identified a couple of years ago, when I think the Sargent School Playground was first being renovated. We also make annual contributions to information technology. We pride ourselves in being ahead of the curve in terms of information technology as a business operation, and contributing annually from the capital improvement plan to information technology means we don't fall behind in that regard. Couple of years ago, with the encouragement of the school committee, we started to include annual school funding for information technology. The school technology, again, some years ago, was lagging a little bit behind, but really now has caught up. They have a very robust system there. We also make regular replacements of our fire apparatus and ambulances. Ambulance today, fully outfitted, goes for $275,000. We replace them on an every-five-year basis. We run two full-time ambulances out of the two stations. It's the busiest aspect of our fire service at this point in terms of response, and regularly replacing those vehicles is important. Base cost is a little over $200,000. In time, you add the equipment, fairly expensive pieces. So you see that the advantage of a five-year plan is that we get into this regular rotation, and that we're not falling behind in trying to figure out how we catch up. Also in this five-year plan is the purchase of two new fire trucks, two new pumper trucks. Those now go for close to three-quarters of a million dollars apiece, or close enough to that. Those have a typical useful life of 15 years. We try to get between 15 and 17, maybe 18 years out of those. Some communities, you'll see them run for 30 years as they're not in particularly good shape, and the maintenance is more expensive than the cost of replacement. But again, this kind of planning, which is required under the charter, forces us to think strategically and over a protracted period of time. One of the underlying goals of this capital plan, certainly for the last seven years, is to maintain the percentage of debt service to the general fund budget. So in the past, we average about 6%, a little over 6%, doesn't sound particularly high, but for every additional dollar that we pay in debt service, that goes to the operating budget, reducing our ability to pay for other operating costs, important operating costs. We made a conscious decision several years ago to reduce the impact that the capital improvement plan has on the operating budget by limiting debt service to at or below 5%. You'll see in this particular plan, which can be found online for all residents and has been there for a couple of months, that we meet that target four out of the five years of this particular plan. This one year, I think we're at 5.01%. Couldn't squeeze out a few extra dollars to get it lower than that, but generally, we stay right around those numbers. We support this project. So debt service comes off what we call geo-bonding. We go to the market, we indicate that we want to bond for these particular projects. And based on federal standards, those projects vary from five-year funding to 20-year funding. Building would be 20 years. Certain other projects, like a piece of rolling stock, a truck within Public Works, would be five years. And then we go to the market and we bond most of these dollars. If you see over a five-year basis, about 24 of the 29 million will be bonded. This is where our bond rating is important. We now have a AAA bond rating. The first time in our history, close to three years ago, we got a AAA bond rating. It's the highest rating that's allowed in the bond world, and it means that we pay less in interest than we were, pride of being a AAA. So that's positive news. Our lower debt services are contributing factor to that. We also contribute to this funding by using one-time revenue sources, something we developed a couple of years ago called the Capital Stabilization Fund. It's a reserve dedicated for the purpose of paying for a particular capital improvement. Couple of years ago, we used that reserve to pay for, in this instance, the replacement of the field turf fields at the high school. And then we build that fund up again, and we focus on one particular expenditure, again, typically in the half a million to three-quarter of a million dollar range. We use those dollars to pay for that project, and therefore, we don't have to bond the dollars, and then we work up that plan again. The debt service policy, the capital improvement spending policy, the Capital Stabilization Fund, all can be found within the town's reserve policies, which have been crafted and adopted by both the school committee, finance committee, and Board of Selectmen. As it relates to the two other, excuse me, three other funds that you'll find in this capital improvement plan, there's the Water Enterprise Fund, Sewer Enterprise Fund, and Stevens Estate Enterprise Fund, and that Stevens Estate appeared for the first time last year, I think last year or the year before. Stevens Estate is finally at the point that it's generating sufficient profits that can take part of their retained earnings and reinvest back into the business. This is something they couldn't have done for the first close to 20 years of operation times. We used to use general fund money to put in capital improvements. I know the CPC has been a regular contributor, and we're now seeing the kind of profits coming off this Stevens Estate, which allows them to reinvest in their own, in our own business, this function facility that may not be common, but it's certainly at the centerpieces of the historic building that sits up there. See that within this program. It's modest spending, typically between $100,000 and $120,000, again, coming out of their retained earnings, their net profits over time. And it's good to see they're doing that, and I would expect some additional spending from that category over time. The Sewer Enterprise Fund is, I think, five years, if I could recall, about $1,990,000 in spending, just under $2 million over the next five years. Interestingly enough, the water and sewer funds had an average of 45% debt service to operating cost when I arrived in 2011, meaning 45 cents of every dollar paid to us by a resident in water and sewer was going to pay for debt service. And it's the reason why rates were fairly high and regularly changing. One thing we realized fairly on, early on, was that we were approving projects without thinking about whether or not we could actually implement them, and what the real cost of just approving projects and borrowing the money without implementing would be. Over time, we've been able to drop the percentage of debt service to operating costs in the sewer to just below 20%, and on the water side, about 24% or 25%. So you see the plans generally spending a little more, a little less every year, but those projects are meaningful projects that we know we're going to do, and if we can't do it in 18 months, then we set it aside till we know we're going to be able to complete that project. And both of those funds, since those funds have done two things. One is, because we've lowered the debt service costs, and therefore lowered the operating costs, neither the Water or Sewer Enterprise Fund has seen a rate increase in six consecutive years. Tell you tonight, based on the finance committee vote tonight of the capital plan and ultimately the budget, I would recommend to the Selectmen on July 1, we're not going to raise those rates again for the seventh consecutive year. Again, that's unperiled in the area, and it comes as a function of being mindful of what happens in this capital plan. At a simultaneous level, since we've been able to lower that debt service cost, we've also been able to build reserves, and we're using those reserves under our financial policy to reinvest those to offset the capital improvement costs, which is further driving down debt service as a function of operating costs. So in the sewer fund over five years, we're using all retained earnings. So every expenditure that's being reinvested into the sewer system is coming out of retained earnings, requiring us not to borrow any money to do those capital improvements. And the Water Enterprise Fund, I think it's approximately $3.6 million of the $4.5 million over the five-year period, will be funded through those same retained earnings, again, significantly reducing our debt service over time. So that's our summary of the capital improvement plan. Certainly, more than happy to answer any questions about any specific aspect of the plan.
Some of these are, I think, more planning-oriented. In the FY19, pedestrian vehicle access improvement, $750,000, and then roadway improvements, FY19 through FY23, $1.23 million. Do you have projects in mind, or are those just set aside for just general improvements and fixing?
Yeah, we can talk a little, let's talk about the roadway project first, it might be sort of easiest to jump to. The roadway plan, we hire a company on a regular basis every three to five years to come in and evaluate every roadway and score it. And the benefit to that, quite frankly, as you can imagine, most residents are okay with their roadway, but it may have varying opinions as to the condition of the roadway. So we hire a third-party consultant, and based on multiple different sort of federal and state standards, evaluate those roadways and give them a score, and then use those scoring systems to determine not only preventive maintenance, but also a regular roadway replacement. So in every five-year capital plan, you can actually find every roadway we're going to complete, the nature of the improvement, and the length of roadway that's going to be repaired. So as a resident, you folks here or folks at home, you open up a capital plan, you flip to the page in the capital plan that talks about roadway improvements. You live on Parker Street, you see if Parker Street is listed in any one of the five years. Let's say it is. It'll say we're doing a full-depth reconstruction of 1,000 feet of Parker Street between this cross street and this cross street, and you know that in that year, that's when your roadway and your section of roadway is going to be complete, and the nature of the work. So every resident knows over the next five years, if their project is in here, then that project is going to be complete in the year it's posted. And we've been very good at meeting that criteria. If you're not in that five-year plan, it means that maybe you think your roadway needs to be done tomorrow, but it's not in this five-year plan. We certainly can still identify you where your roadway fits in that scoring, and where it's likely to be the next year, the next year, the next year, by looking at comparative streets to do that. So we feel this is the most transparent way. This is not a greasy wheel process. We don't, calls are helpful, and we certainly will send the company back out and work with our team to evaluate the projects, to make sure that they're fair. But more calls doesn't get the roadway done faster. A poorer street condition does, right? And so it allows everybody to realize there's an equity, inequity, not inequity, inequity to the process, and a process by which we evaluate all these roadways. And so every capital plan going back five years and looking out five years gives you the ability to understand where we stand in roadways. We take the unusual step. The state contributes approximately $800,000 in Chapter 90 funding to our community. It's based on a number of criterias, roadway miles being a driving criteria of that, the bigger the community, more roadway miles, and therefore, the greater contribution from the Commonwealth. Most communities only fund roadway projects up to the state contribution. We add approximately 50% to that. So we take what the state provides us and add approximately 50% to that, so we can do 50% more roadways than otherwise we'd be able to do if we just relied on the state, what's called Chapter 90 funding. And we're very proud of that. In this particular plan, we're going to invest in roadway improvements. I'm upset, I'm with my glasses here, but a little over $6 million. On a rolling basis, every five years, it's been $6 million for the last seven or eight years. And I think over time, that means we're more aggressively getting to roadway improvements than some. I think you're going to see us change some focus in the future to make more interconnectivity between neighborhoods by adding the same kind of dollars or similar dollars on the sidewalk front, because I think that's a place where we're getting a lot of feedback. As it relates to the pedestrian vehicle access improvements, that's associated with the work happening around the kindergarten facility, which will include access off of 125, the parking associated with the kindergarten, and a traffic signal that will ultimately be installed at 125 at the new kindergarten entrance. That project will be complete in August. There'll be a, what I'm referring to is a soft entrance there, so the entrance will come in off of Chicaring. But in the long term, that'll need to be made more permanent, and ultimately, there'll be a signal. We're going through the permitting phase now with the Commonwealth to make sure that that's signalized. We have a traffic engineer that's involved with that project, and the same traffic engineer is communicating with the Commonwealth on a very large project that's currently contemplated at Mass Ave and Chicaring, which is a $6 million state project, and obviously, the bigger recreational complex project, which also has traffic sort of embedded into it. And all that's being managed by a company, a firm called TEC.
So a light, so in between Mass Ave and Main Street, a light somewhere where there's a driveway entrance?
Yeah, I can't tell you exactly how that's going to work. I don't know if you want me to as an non-engineer, but ultimately, it'll control the traffic that gets you in and out of specifically the kindergarten complex.
Next year, this is all very interesting to me, so feel free to keep talking.
No, no, it's all linked. So that's what that pedestrian project is focused on. It really is the site work associated with the kindergarten project. Yep.
Anybody else?
Can we step back just a little bit, on the senior center, the...
Sure.
Roughly, like, the size of the senior center today compared to the, what's...
Yeah, the size of the building today is a little over 7,000 square feet. The new proposed center will be between 13,000 and 14,000 square feet.
Yeah, I guess the one thing that sits in my mind, and I hate to be a little bit of a second-guesser, but if we look at the school administration...
It happens to me every day, John. It's okay.
That's true, that's true. But it strikes me as, in hindsight, if we could have built that thing 50% bigger, we would have been in better shape. And I guess where I'm, in my mind, as we design some of these things, the flexibility to add and expand becomes like the just about most important criteria, because if anything, we're going to need more. And I just wonder if, you know, given that this isn't, this site isn't owned by us, what will be the ultimate maximum build-out there, and will it sustain us for 30 or 40 years?
Yeah, it's a great question. So I would, we've had this conversation. I'm not sure I completely agree with the school admin building, given what we knew at the time. Can we know today? Yeah, but so, a little bit...
It's a second-guesser, so...
Yeah, but it's not a problem at all. I would say that as it relates to the site we're talking about, we're talking about 9,300 square-foot floors. So at two fully-developed floors, you're at 18,000 square feet, well above the common senior center size, by thousands of square feet. What we're proposing is, this is going to be a two-story structure, 9,300 square feet each plate. Probably, the first phase would get us to the 13 to 14, leaving a building, not uncommon, newer reports used to this, to say unfinished, framed but unfinished in the section of it. So that if there's another municipal use, or an expanded senior center use, we'd be able to grow into that space, but not spending taxpayer dollars to build 18,000, if 18,000 doesn't turn out to be the full need. What you identify is exactly the reason we can't do it here, because here, we're limited, that structure won't support a second floor. And that structure supporting into the driveway means all of a sudden, 88 parking spaces become 70 parking spots. And one of the things that I know that you and I have talked about is, one of the plans, if we stayed here as a senior center, was the need to acquire land on Main Street for parking. There's a lot of things we would do with Main Street, but I'm not sure acquiring land to turning into parking is sort of the ideal use of acquisition dollars. So the ability to move it into a site, dedicate 80 parking spots to it, which is the proposal, give us the ability to expand upwards to 18,000 square feet, notice our new fire station... Notice our new fire station is 14-5. So we're talking about a structure that is 20-plus percent, could be 20% greater than our central fire station, that I think addresses that concern, which is always a concern we have. So I think it's addressed through our ability to expand into the building if we construct it properly.
The other question that I had about the senior center is, have you got any negative feedback that the location is too far from downtown?
I've had probably a half a dozen-plus meetings with the seniors over the general discussion of location and then more specific as the project has, you know, become, because they couldn't speak in more specific terms. I think, again, everybody would benefit if we could build a senior downtown. We can't build a senior center downtown. You have to acquire land at a million-plus dollars, then acquire, it's just not feasible. So in a perfect world, maybe, you know, if we could find the site in terms of preference. In my conversation with the seniors, we regularly indicate that if we could locate a senior center as the crow flies within one mile of Main Street, you know, then they would be happy as long as we could provide the adequate transportation, bringing the facility back down to Main Street. Main Street is a place that seniors often visit. We want them down on Main Street for any number of reasons, the economy and so forth. And we would expect that our transportation, we have two full-time buses. Today, sometimes they pick people up in their neighborhoods and bring them back. I would expect that that transportation then would be regular trips from the senior center for those people who drive. And just an indication, if you look again at the parking lot during the day, come midday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, seniors often drive to our senior center. And so if they're driving from someplace to Main Street and we move the facility one mile away, then they're going to drive from whatever that place was to that facility. And I think we connect those dots by having the shuttle buses offer as part of a regular routine, bringing them to Main Street to do what they need to do. And for those folks who are in this immediate area, Bingham Way is an example, and the condo development out back, Sutton Pond, then we make sure that we have shuttle facilities to get them, shuttle buses to get them from here, from this parking lot to that facility. So I think it's very doable. Again, there's certain locations, probably, you know, four or five miles out where we could have acquired land. It wouldn't have been logical to do that. We would have just be displacing people too far out of the center. Yep, it's a great question.
So are we being asked to take any action on this particular item or is this just for our information?
If I can make one comment and then make the others, I certainly, your historical, the regular practice has been for the planning board to take a favorable action or otherwise. As far as I can tell, it's always been favorable on the CIP and we certainly, although it's made it through FinCom and made it through the Selectmen some months ago, I have no problem with that practice. I would say probably to engage the planning board earlier with this process, consistent with when the planning board, excuse me, the Finance Committee sees the capital improvement plan, I think is a benefit to all of us. Again, even though this is not a charter reference to the planning board's role, your feedback is important. But your feedback, and don't take this in the wrong way, your feedback in early April, when the plan has made it through so many stages, means that if I had a gotcha, in a moment when I said, oh my goodness, how did we forget that? It would be difficult for me to change. So certainly as it relates to this, I'd love your support. And then in future years, I'm suggesting that the plan, that when it gets submitted to the Selectmen and approved, it comes to this group as well, so that I can gain your input. And if there's things that we're going to change between now and town meeting, I think there's a reason town meeting, the Charter says that this has to go to the Selectmen 150 days before town meeting. We're now something like 40 days before town meeting. And so I'd like to see if we can change the process so that we can engage you sooner and get some feedback to the capital plan.
To add on to that, I think that would be great. And I think we would definitely, we really do like to kind of wrestle with these things and toss them around and talk about them. So I think that would be helpful, especially with what we're doing with the master plan and for timing for next year. I think it's not only, I think it's imperative that the capital plan, especially five years in the master plan, work together to, otherwise, you know, we're not really all rowing together.
So I would recommend, since we're going to be moving to the stage where I need to get the warrant complete, it would look almost incomplete to me if we have a capital plan approved by a FinCom, approved by a Board of Selectmen, and the planning board recommendation is left blank as a result of timing. It would create a little bit of confusion across the board. So I certainly would appreciate support for this plan and then again, and then hopefully next year, we start the process early enough to be able to incorporate your thoughts into what we're thinking.
Okay. Anyone have thoughts, opinions on this?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I agree with the town manager that, and thank you for the invitation to get us into the mix a little bit earlier. I think it might help and if something comes up, we could catch it. I do think we should vote expeditiously, but I don't think we should vote right at the second. I think we ought to maybe hear a few of the other things we're hearing tonight and then we could decide, you know, when do you need our recommendation by on this and the other thing?
You know, that's always the great question, as the articles change and the numbers change and we keep on moving the document. I would say the real clear deadline is the April 9 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Is there a little latitude on some things post that? Yes, it depends on the article. So if I go to a zoning article, as an example, just slightly changing the topic, and we go into an April 9 meeting, which the Selectmen control the warrant, and that is defined again by Charter in terms of milestones, and they see a land use article that does not have a planning board recommendation, even though it's sponsored by the planning board, when they go to take their votes on April 9, it causes them this sort of odd pause. So you end up in this, so I'm only changing that in the sense that in a perfect, in a, not even a perfect world, I think ideally the short answer is April 9. I think I can squeeze some information into the warrant before printing that the Selectmen don't vote on, but I'd hate the Selectmen not to take action on certain articles because they said, what did the planning board think? And I said, the planning board's going to do that next meeting. And a town meeting warrant goes to our residents with a whole bunch of planning board recommendations as blank, what made a town meeting, and Selectmen sort of follow suit because they wonder why. And for me, town meeting warrant is the document in which we communicate with our public enough in advance that the book they get is damn near close to the whole story and only some tweaking at the end, which sometimes happens, I get that. And so as it relates to all of these things, I would prefer that the action be taken prior to the Selectmen closing and taking final action on the warrant. And that is this Tuesday, April 9.
Yeah, I mean, I think for some of the zoning ones, that would be a problem this year, because we generally have a practice of having three public hearings on, you know, the zoning articles, and then we make our decision.
So let me challenge that as you challenged the senior center. I would say this, a resident isn't sponsoring the article, the planning board's sponsoring the article. So if a planning board sponsors an article and then says, just sort of listen to me through, I guess, and then says, we vote favorable action on what we're recommending, but from the public process, right, because that's sort of logical to me, right? But from the public process, you change a sentence, a word, a paragraph, we're not, right? Then that's the kind of things that happen between town meeting, between now and town meeting, and the amendment appears and the planning board makes a report and says, this is what's included in the warrant, we make this amendment, our recommendation is now contingent upon this version. That to me is cleaner than leaving the speculation of why I have a planning board-sponsored article with no planning board recommendation printed in a warrant. And someone says, I'm confused. The planning board asked for the article, asked for the Selectmen to include it in the warrant, but didn't make a recommendation. And so I think both can be accomplished. I think you always enjoy, especially the planning board, a lot of things come up. You always enjoy the latitude to make modifications between now and town meeting and report to that. But leaving it blank sort of seems like the article isn't, it creates confusion between the sponsorship and the endorsement. To me, but that's my take on life.
And I'd like to hear everyone's opinion on this. My thought is in line with the town managers, that if there is broad general consensus about any of these articles, that we are sponsoring it and we think that we've really come either close to a final version of it, you know, even if there are going to be some tweaks, then I would prefer to vote on them now, have it, the Board of Selectmen be able to say, okay, the planning board supports the concept of this and the general language that we have, knowing that there might be some changes, continue with our public hearing process. I mean, I think we have, you know, two or three people here tonight. If more people come to the next one, it's great. If there are things that we come across that change some of the definitions or change some of the things in here, great. But unless I see that there's one that's really controversial or that there's really not a broad consensus on the board, then maybe that's something we hold back. But if there are things that we have broad consensus over, I'd rather we approve them tonight, even knowing that our public hearing is going to proceed so that they can go on the warrant as with planning board approval. And then we can do it one by one. That would be my thought, but I'd definitely open that up to everyone, if anyone has thoughts or if we can just do them individually and see where we go.
If it helps the group, by the way, there's an explanation below every article. I think it's perfectly appropriate if the planning board hasn't completed whatever complete needs, right, the rest of a process, that the explanation could include that the planning board reserves the right to amend the article, you know, we can reference some clause that you'd be happy with in the explanation. At least in that way, it explains that, it doesn't create the confusion of the gap in the long vote, but it gives the planning board, lets the reader understand that the process evolves, right? From my perspective, I think that that's different than a capital article. I can't, I guess I could, but it'd be hard to imagine the planning board would say, hey, by the way, the 50,000 in IT, we're going to eliminate that. I mean, it'd be sort of odd to me that by process, something that's not defined as a planning board role, that you'd amend this or disapprove it. But as it relates to your own articles, I think if it helps through explanation within that, to let the reader know that it could change, I think that's perfectly appropriate. Again, the more information we can give town meeting members, rather than the gap of making them guess, is in my world, I think, best for the people who show up to town meeting. However, that helps or it doesn't help.
I, I'll just kind of, I agree with that approach, I think, to the extent that we can make our recommendations tonight. And I think there are probably two of these in my mind that might require an explanatory, you know, that we are still, we're making our recommendation, but we're still working on some of the finer details. I think that's a better way to go, because I know, I, maybe I'm one of the few people that do this, but I actually do look at the town warrant and read it and look for the recommendations. So I think it's important to have it in there if we can do that.
I agree.
I'm much in line with Jen's thoughts.
Peter, what do you think?
Well, I think if we can, it's better to have it in the warrant.
Okay. And, yeah, Chris, thoughts?
I've just watched lots of Board of Selectmen meetings where they have the stuff in front of them and they go like, well, what's up with the planning board? I mean, I've seen it happen over and over. And then it really sends them like, it's very confusing. It's very difficult for the Board of Selectmen to say, give their approval to something that doesn't have, they don't have it in front of them. They don't know what's going on with the planning board. Very useful.
Maybe the case, but honestly, this is the first time I've ever had anybody say this is a formal request. So if they've had it as an issue all the time, not once the Selectmen, and all the time I've been with this planning board has ever come to me and complained about that.
Regardless, I have to say, I've watched meetings, to Mr. Mailer's point, I've watched meetings where they say, well, on this one, I don't see a planning board recommendation. What do they do? And they all look to the town manager and say, well, what went on with the planning board? And it's a pause, you say, it's a pause.
I guess the concern that I have is from a public policy perspective. If something's not contentious, it's not contentious and you could pass it through. But I guess the whole idea is, the purpose of the public hearings is to listen to all public substantive public opinion on the issue and then make a recommendation based on that. Now, if it's something that we've worked on and we've put together ourselves, it's a little bit different, but I'm a little bit worried about approving something and then making substantive amendments to it that, you know, arguably may or may not change our decision. That's, you know, maybe that would happen, maybe it won't. Maybe.
But aren't we talking about articles that we've proposed?
The articles are in the warrant. They're already in the warrant. What you asked me to place in the warrant is in the warrant. And so that cat, whatever's out of the bag, something's out of the bag, because you're communicating to the public that this is the likely, remember what a warrant does? It has to define the likely subject of conversation. So if that's going to radically change, it doesn't mean that it's going, not going to change, but if it's going to radically or substantively change, it shouldn't be in the warrant if that's not fundamentally the framework of the conversation. So we could, and I've seen some communities do this, say to the Board of Selectmen, no zoning article appears in the warrant until such time as you've completed your process. What we do instead is say, when the planning board says, these are likely topics we're going to embrace, you know, with some tweaks, we include them in the warrant. But there are places that would say, planning board, where is your completed public hearing process and your completed language? Or these items are not going in the warrant. The planning board does not control the substance of the warrant. It is simply the Board of Selectmen. That, there's no, and that's not the Charter, that's the rules. So a planning board, I'm just saying, a Selectmen, a board could say, well, you're giving this, you asked to put it in, and then I don't understand what you're asking me to do. You're creating this confusion. So I understand the public policy. I would say the public policy is that if we want to include warrants, that either the planning board must be complete before a date certain, which probably is 30 days prior to date to today, which this year would have been really difficult, I get. Either we have to really peel back the clock so that the planning board's public hearing process is concluded probably by the first of March, or we're going to continue the practice where the planning board articles are included really out of trust and respect in the warrant and an expectation that this represents what is likely to be discussed and approved. So from a public policy, I think you just can't end up in between, and I feel like we're in between all of this.
So this is what I'd like to do, well, one thing for that. It would have been nice to have at least two public hearings before we got here, but we can try to plan better for next year, but things happen. We had a special town meeting, it was, it was tough this year. So why don't we just, the one we just went over, annual town meeting warrant, Article 24, we've been asked to weigh in on that appropriation capital improvement plan for fiscal year '19. So why don't we?
So, can I have a question?
Please.
So I just wanted to ask a question to your sort of logic of the issue here. I'm not quite sure I understand, maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying, but you're saying that if it's a planning board warrant article and the planning board doesn't act on it, it creates confusion and that's bad public policy, I think is what I heard you say. But isn't there also an argument to balance that against the opportunity for public hearing and public input, which is also a public policy objective?
Yes. So what I'm suggesting is, I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. So if the leaning of the public policy bent is that the public process, of which one public hearing is required, not three, but understanding the process, if the bent toward any individual member from a public policy perspective is that that hearing office must be, that hearing office process must be complete, then I would suggest that those articles are not ready. It's, so let me give you an example. You have on your article today, a citizen petition, which did not come through the zoning process because the applicant hadn't met the milestones by date, right? And so he had an alternative route. And what I'm suggesting is similarly, the planning board, if it decides that all of it must be complete, then should complete the process in time so that the Selectmen have the opportunity to incorporate all of that into the warrant. What has happened here is that the article that you've asked to be included is included, but not any recommendation to the article. And in and of itself, when someone reads that, they say, sponsored by planning board. Well, you're sponsoring this article? Is this the intention? If so, either complete the process, and I understand this here being difficult, I'm very understanding of the process everybody went through. But historically speaking, we've always been a little bit challenged to the day, not, I mean, always a little challenged. And I'm saying that the planning board must conclude with the public hearings, if you want to conduct all of those, and hand to the Board of Selectmen a completed article, the article in its final format, because this isn't for the Selectmen or you or I, this is for town meeting members. And that warrant should represent, in my opinion, the goal should be 100% of what's going to be discussed at the meeting. Now, it's not always possible, but ideally, it's 100%. So in my perfect world, you guys would have finished a month ago, had your recommendations, completed the warrant articles, put them in the warrant, sewed up and not talked about again between now and town meeting, unless something changed. But that's not where we're at. But where we're at is town meeting warrant articles being requested to be placed in a warrant by the Board of Selectmen, in which it leaves open and printed and handed to residents, this piece where it says, recommendation of the planning board, and it's just blank. I think these articles represent what you recommend today. That's all I'm suggesting. And it may change tomorrow, but at the time the warrant closed and we needed that feedback, it is what it represents today. You've asked for public hearings in these. So in my ideal world, you'd be done a month earlier. But if this is going to be the world we operate in, then I think the planning board should say, this is the article that we know today, recommend that, maybe make a footnote, is Is this subject to change based on additional information or additional public hearings? I think that, that, that satisfies the public policy piece, and is the most transparent way to communicate with people who are preparing for town meeting.
So would this also have the effect of creating a precedent for years going forward? That, no, no, this is the way it's done, and?
Good. So let me give you an example, citizen petitions. There are deadlines in the town meeting charter that say very specifically when citizen petitions are due. And so the citizen has a certain date to file that petition. Now, that is, that is specific to the charter, and I'm not sure that there is such a thing as past practice, as relates to the functions you have. So you always have the flexibility when unusual situations arise, and I sort of certainly understand that. But again, as a practice, in a perfect world, I would say, I'm going to get you the capital improvement plan, not so that it's reviewed by the planning board in April, we can, why don't you get it when the finance committee gets it? Why don't you take a look at it and tell me if you have feedback? It's the same thing I feel about articles. If we're going to tell citizens that they have to submit articles by a certain deadline, so we can get through a public process, I think we should say that for every department and every board, if it's going to be a requirement, in order to get an opinion or recommendation by the body that oversees it. My only difference here is that you're recommending an article and not recommending, making a recommendation. That's where my disconnect is. I think they're one and the same. I think that if you're going to recommend an article, the assumption is that you support it.
So I, I could make an argument, well, maybe I couldn't, but I think somebody could make an argument that says, with respect to this concern of confusing the public, that, that I think an argument could be made, that the public would have confidence that the planning board is not going to vote until it has satisfied full public input through public hearings. And I think, I think that argument could be made just as strongly, where one may say, this is confusing to the public, but another could say, well, I know the planning board's doing that because they want to have thorough public input, and they'll have their recommendation for us.
I don't, I don't, I think you're, you seem to be missing my point, that I'm not assuming that, I'm simply saying that that's true too. But isn't it best that we go into every town meeting with the assumption that every article is complete? That it is, now, I understand things changed, but in a, in the best case scenario, every warrant article has been vetted through the right public process, and each representative board has weighed in. This would be like the finance committee, let me give you an analogy. The finance committee is not ready yet, and they choose not to vote on the budget. And so the recommendation on the budget is, made at town meeting. How do you think, we're not all finance people, but how do you think that would be taken by the person going to town meeting, looking at the budget, and seeing that the, one of the boards responsible for approving it hadn't yet made a decision? Wouldn't that leave the impression to some, not everybody, not that they, some may say they're going to have to want to complete the public process, I get that, and some would start to speculate whether or not the budget was in fact set, whether there was going to be alterations or modifications. I'm agreeing with you only with one exception. Let's complete the process in the future, early enough to accomplish all of it. Complete the three-haring process, get your recommendation, and get them all in the warrant, just like the finance committee recommendations, and the selectmen recommendations, and anybody else, so that the reader has 100% of the story. I don't know how anybody can think that that's not better than it is leaving a blank.
I think where the problem comes in, and I understand exactly where you're coming from, I think we'd have to basically do, if, if we're doing something like the solar bylaws, a good example, we would have to do it actually three months earlier. I think one month's not enough. I, in order to have enough time to be absolutely sure, you, I think you have to do it three months earlier.
Could be.
But things like that, that are bottom up, you, you could do it, it just would, you'd have to do it earlier. Where there's a problem with the planning board is, there's a set of articles that could come up, that might be originally a citizen petition, but the planning board may say, we understand what you're trying to do, it absolutely makes sense, we will support that, and we will sponsor that. In some cases, they're very tactical, in some cases, they could be big and strategic. Because after all, think of the special town meeting, that's exactly what that was. The problem ends up in those cases, is you can't control the timetable enough, and what if somebody comes in with a major article on a citizen petition? Those are the hard ones to manage. That's, you know, those, because we can't control the time as much. And, but there's still a lot of work associated with it.
I completely agree, but that's the exception. And I'm saying, and every rule is an exception. I can give you all kinds of exceptions, whether it's a financial article or a planning article. So let's use solar. So you guys use a process where you deliberate, followed by public hearings. Why couldn't the public hearings, right, co-terminus with the deliberation, to incorporate people's opinion, then have one sort of omnibus public hearing that takes in the final product? Then you satisfy somebody, so the sequential way of doing things, I'm not, I'm not criticizing, does make the process at times, can make the times process longer. But using your example, if we have some, set aside any special town meeting, because the timeframes just don't work. But if you had a citizen petition, which met that standard of really being a game changer, that's the exception. I'm not talking about the exception. I'm not talking about the exception at all. I'm talking about the rule. As a regular practice, most of these items that you have in front of you, you've seen, and I'm predetermining, but most of them seem to be more regular practice than exception. And as regular practice items, I believe, as you, that the regular practice should be to sponsor an article and be prepared to put it in the warrant. Exceptions are exceptions, John, we bump into them all the time. No one's talking about exceptions. The world changes, we all make changes. I'm just talking about, from a regular practice, most items are not that exception. So set the exceptions aside, and see if we, in the future, can make sure our process includes the opinion of the planning board. I think that's good.
This has been helpful to me, because I think the discussion has actually matured and evolved, just as we're talking, with you now making the distinction between regular practice versus exceptions.
Of course.
And that, well, but I think it's helpful to articulate that.
Okay.
And so the discussion has been helpful to at least me. And that kind of goes to my earlier question of whether or not this would set a precedent, and, you know, you said it could. And that's why I think it's important to make the distinction between, that's why it's been helpful to me to hear you make the distinction between regular practice versus special exceptions. And the only other concern I would note is, in one of your earlier points, I, I think we have to be careful about not conflating the sense that any board, whether your example of the finance board or other, not conflating a sense that, oh, this board is not doing their job, versus this board is providing a guarantee of ample public input. And either one could sort of seemingly delay the process, right?
We do.
But we shouldn't conflate those two, because the one might be reason to, to think, well, jeez, that doesn't seem right, whereas the other is, hey, that's an important sort of guarantee that the public has had an opportunity.
And the only comment, and of course, I agree with that.
Yeah.
I would say though, that however, a deliberative public process that doesn't include a recommendation of the planning board, in and of itself, doesn't support that you've done all that you can do. In other words, we all trust, the community does, I know, I speak to them, and I trust, as your appointing authority, that you guys are thoughtful and deliberative. But the, but not voting on these doesn't make you thoughtful and deliberative. You are thoughtful and deliberative, right? So I don't want to, I don't know how to conflate, you're not voting on these as the, as showing that you're thoughtful and deliberative. It doesn't, they're not related at all. I, the public trusts you, I trust you, they should. There should just be an efficient enough public process that we can get to our residents the information they deserve, even an open town meeting. We're not hand-delivering warrants to people's houses. They have to go find the information. That's the nature of our form of government. Many walk in the room reading the book as they can, but some read in advance, and the more information they can have is better. That's all I'm saying. And so in a, in not a perfect world, but I think a preferred world, most of the work, except for the exceptions, would get done, and it would get done in time to communicate to the public. And that's all I'm suggesting. And as it relates to almost all of these articles, I think, without making votes for you, I think that can be done this time, and I think the process can be refund, refined next time, to make it even further improved and more, more likely that would read that, meet that standard again, unless it's an exception. And that's my opinion, that's, you can differ, and that's okay.
So with all that, that was a good discussion. I'd like to try to vote on as many of these as we feel comfortable. If there are ones where we feel we need to either make notes, or exceptions, or footnotes, then we can do that. And if there's not enough votes to vote on something, so be it, but I, I think there probably will be. So let's, let's at least go through what we can. And so we've had the discussion about the annual town meeting warrant, Article 24 appropriation capital improvement plan. I think we have very little input on that, or that has been presented to us. I think we got to ask some questions. So if I could get, someone to make a motion for a favorable recommendation on the capital improvement plan?
I'll make that motion.
Can I second? Rule of order?
Not sure.
I don't know. I think so. Okay. Second the motion. Discussion? Does anyone, against?
For, for me, everything sounds reasonable in the capital improvement plan, but I'm just hearing this tonight, and, and the, the details, while the town major gave a great explanation, I, I just don't feel like I have enough information to recommend favorable action.
Okay. Anyone else?
I, I guess, my, I'm not really sure it's, this is something we should really be weighing in at all. I trust the numbers, it all sounds good, but to me, this is a finance committee issue, unless it's brought to us way in advance. So I kind of, so I sort of agree in that if we're going to be asked to make an opinion on it, that it should have been a lot, we should have, it should have been a lot earlier so we could actually weigh in, but, I don't know, I'm comfortable with at least what's been presented, that it's an appropriate capital improvement plan for whatever our vote is worth. It seems that I, I have no problem voting favorable on this, and, and as we discussed, you know, next year, especially with the master plan, getting more into it. So that's kind of where I stand. I don't know, John, Peter, what you guys think? What's the practice, what's, what's it been like in the past?
Well, I mean, it, I think the one thing that's a little bit different this year about it is that the actual capital plan ties into the planning board stuff, in a way that it actually, it, it was much more of a perfunctory sort of thing in the past for us. And we actually focused mostly on like the DPW, the, the land use pieces of it. So it was, once we understood what it was, we, I think we always approved it. What I think is, is a little bit different here is the fact that the main article in the capital budget is contingent on the rezoning. Because if we don't rezone, is, is the capital budget going to approved anyway for that item? I don't know. I mean, that's, that's why I wanted to wait until we went through sort of the other ones, because I think they're tied together.
Fair enough.
I mean, I don't think, in my mind, I have enough information. I think the plan's fine, but it, it makes sense to me, but I think, given this unusual combination of these two factors, I think we have to at least go through and have a conversation on the other thing first before we go to an assistance.
So can I just ask to clarify? Are you saying that you think that your recommendation or vote on the capital plan depends on whatever recommendation is made on the zoning articles that relate to the senior center?
I think they're related, yeah, because you, the question becomes, is the money appropriated if we don't get this, if we don't do this one project, and it doesn't get approved?
So I, I guess what I'm wondering is, are you thinking that, the, just in terms of time, like, I'm, I'm not trying to be dense about this, but like, are you thinking that it really hinges on what the vote is at town meeting on these particular?
No, I'm thinking we ought to have at least a discussion tonight, but we should have, we should have an understanding of what would happen if town meeting gets the zoning, would the capital budget still be approved?
Well, I think I'm right here, so I can.
Yeah, so I figured, yeah.
Yes, we're building senior center.
And it'll either be on that spot, or the spot identified by the zoning.
Yeah.
So I, I don't, and, and I will comment while standing. This plan has been on the shelf, on the internet, and available to every member of this board for three and a half months. If you choose not to get engaged in it, or choose not to call me about it, that's fine. But the idea that one week or two weeks of further deliberation on this plan is somehow going to make a difference, I don't know how that's going to happen, unless you're all going to meet with me individually and ask about the specific aspects of the plan. So from that perspective, I'm expressing a little frustration, and I'm, I'm admitted upfront, because the plan has been literally read by residents, and read by finance committees, and read by, so the plan, this goes to my point about timing. If this is an essential function of the planning board, you should know it's coming, and it shouldn't just have to appear in, in the agenda to start to read it, if this is going to be an essential part of what we do. But specific to the senior center, we are building a senior center, and it'll be on the site affected by the zoning, or it'll be on the site back here, unless town meeting decides to vote against both, in which case, it won't be a senior center. But, but beyond that, we have committed to building a senior center. I am committed to building it as Project Seven in the project budget, and it will get built, either here or on that site.
So what problems do we have with this?
Well, that's what I'm, that's, I mean, again, I, I don't, to me, I'm.
I'd love to vote, I can't.
Right.
I, I'm saying, I read this, and I've looked at it online, I mean, this is not new to me.
Well, it, see, I differ there. I think it is new to me, because I didn't think this was something that we vote on. And frankly, that's why I'm willing to just vote favorable on it, because I don't see the capital improvement plan as really our major function. These are the town's, the executive branch, this is the funding.
I didn't think that the board was going to have to vote on this, I, I did it. But it's just a normal course, because I'm on the board, and it, I just, I look at these things, and I read them, and I just do. So just because I'm on a town board, I look at these things.
I agree with Chris. I've been familiar with this for many weeks, if not months, at this point.
And, you know.
And it's sort of baffles, I, I'm sort of baffled by the, the notion that we didn't know there was a senior center coming, because as an active participant in the town, this has been discussed at town meeting for years, and it is something that has been in front of this board for several months. It's, it's not news.
I mean, I figure I just didn't know we were going to vote on it, because I'm new on the block. So the voting part of it, yeah. Knowledge of this, I certainly have had knowledge of this for a while.
Well, I guess that's, that's, it doesn't, it seems like it's being presented as if we have more of a role than we have in the past, and I don't think we do have more of a role than, than the planning board has in the past.
Yeah.
It does have some information, some projects that are planning-related, but I think, you know, those things will be kind of worked out in the master plan, and actually, for next year, I think we should get more involved in some of this with the master plan, because executing the master plan, it, and the dollars are important, and where, you know, money is being spent, that's important. But we don't have that yet, so where we have this in front of us, I'd like to vote favorable action. If we want to, if there's a motion to table it until we go through other items, that's, we could do that as well, that's fine. So, I'm going to vote on this, or do you want to table it until we talk about other items?
Well, I'm, I'm ready to vote on this tonight.
Right. But do you want, do you want to table it until later?
I would rather have the other discussion and then vote on both of them.
All right, so how, so do you want to make a motion to table this until we go through the other articles?
Okay, yeah, so I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll move on. Ooh, motion table, that was cool. All right, so let's do, um, why don't we just start at the top of the new public hearings? Article 11, adoption of zoning bylaws. That should be, why don't we start with that one? All right, so we'll, we're having a public hearing. Does anyone from the public want to talk about adoption of zoning bylaws? No. This is the renumbering of the code, with the general code company?
It's in addition to the zoning bylaw, but it does include the zoning bylaw.
And so we're?
And some non-substantive changes that we reviewed at the last meeting.
Okay, and we're, so we're voting on adoption of the zoning bylaw only, and in making those non-substantive changes to the zoning bylaw, which will all be in a document that is available for review.
So both documents, the town code and total draft, and the changes related to all those documents, again, of which the zoning bylaw is embedded in that document. Both are in the clerk's office, as well as the planning department for review.
Anybody have any, anybody want to have a discussion on that one?
No, I think we went through, we found the last type. So I would make a recommendation for favorable action on Article 11.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're in favor of Article 11. Article 13, amend zoning map to rezone the parcel of land known as MAP 009.0 parcel 0046, 127 Marblehead Street, to be included within the residential four zoning district. Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak about this one?
Did we not recommend favorable action in the last meeting?
We rec... We suggested that this is going to be a planning board sponsored article. So again, that's kind of the... Leads back to the discussion we had about what does it mean to sponsor it versus make a recommendation? And do we need to wait for three public hearings when it... At least on this one, seems pretty unanimous that we're all going to support this. So for the record, this was a changing of, what was it? Was it general business?
General business to residential four, which the area in yellow on this map is all residential four.
This is an area, this is at the corner of Middlesex and Marblehead. It's mostly single families, two families, three families, almost all residential with a couple of businesses in there. Mike's Market and nail salon. There's a couple. This property has not been used in many, many years and is significantly ugly and rundown.
And the property owner came several months ago with the memo requesting the planning board's support of this. That's how it was sponsored by the planning board.
And he understands that he may need ZVA approval for anything, for additional things that he wants to take in terms of additional units.
Right, and he knows that.
Yep.
Well, I'm just trying to remember, we didn't put any sort of special contingencies or factors in that we had. You know, because in some cases with the rezoning, we asked them to covenant out certain uses, but that's not the case here.
No, because it's going to residential four.
Yeah, it's all residential, yeah.
It already was a mixed-use building previously. It's been abandoned for some time. And so he's aware that if he's going to extend it beyond the two units upstairs, that he may need to go to the ZVA.
And his attorney happened to have been a former member of the ZVA.
And so he was aware of those requirements.
I think this is a significant public benefit.
Yes.
Lived in that area.
I think he's doing a good job, too. I think he's thought through what he's trying to do. So I would recommend favorable action on Article 13.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Article 13, 5-0, recommend favorable action. Okay, Article 14, amend section 8.9 wireless service facilities to extend the notification requirement for a wireless service facility special permit for butters to a butter with... For butters to a butter within 500 feet of the property line of the petitioner. So this would raise the notification requirement on the applicant from 300 feet to 500 feet. Is that correct, Gene? This would be somewhat novel in our bylaws. But I know that the board really felt that with wireless facilities were significantly different than really pretty much anything else we had. And given their size and their scope and how they affect the neighborhood, that this minimal increase in notification, which depending on where it's located, could be significant, might not be. But would it be appropriate, given those factors? Anyone in the public? I know we have heard, I think, from some members of the public in favor of this. Is that accurate?
In favor of various distances.
In favor of increasing the butter notification. I know someone said half a mile.
Right, so varying distances, but they were all in favor of directionally increasing the requirement.
Okay, and I think that this is a good, moderate increase that affords the town extra protection while not hopefully... While not running afoul of any legal requirements. So. Any other discussion on this? Okay, someone want to make a motion for favorable action on Article 14?
I'm making a motion for favorable action on Article 14.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article 15 and 16, let's do those together. That is the senior center proposal. Amend section 7.4, building heights by amending the eligibility criteria for a waiver of the maximum height for residential multifamily dwellings and townhouses in the business two zoning district. And then a corresponding amend zoning map to rezone the following parcels of land to be included within the business two zoning district. MAP 74 parcel 23, MAP 74 parcel 54, and MAP 74 parcel 24. Eric Forey is here. Would you like to speak to this? And if you could just give a... Since we're, you know, kind of the new public hearing, if you could just give an overview. I know we've been through this on multiple occasions, but if you could just give us a little overview and then some of the questions that we've asked, if we could go through those.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The overview is that these two articles will allow for a kind of combined, I'll call it mixed-use project, with the proposed new senior center and a multifamily structure at the former Knights of Columbus site on Sutton Street. Currently, there are three parcels involved with that. The Knights of Columbus site is technically two parcels that are currently in the general business zone. And then the parcel next to it, also now under, I believe, purchase and sale. I don't think actual ownership, but there's a purchase and sale on the house next to that site. And that is in the R4 district. We're proposing the senior center to be on the site of the existing house. And on the Knights of Columbus parcel, the multifamily structure. This is, if you remember, the... Currently, there is a site approval from the state for the Knights of Columbus for a 40B affordable housing unit complex, which involves more, is more dense, more units, buildings, more buildings, and buildings of a greater height. So what we're proposing is to work with that developer on a more kind of subdued amount of number. We brought the units down. The structure of the building would be no more than four stories. And in order to do that, we need to move the parcel into the B2 district, which allows for multifamily on its own. I'll point out that in general business, multifamily is, you can have apartments, but no more than 50% of a building. Here, there would be... That building would be strictly residential units. And to do that, it would require changing what's currently in the bylaw, which allows the planning board, as part of the special permit, review the discretion to waive the height restriction, which in B2 is 35 feet, to no more than 55 feet and no more than four structures. Currently, in order for... And that only applies to residential buildings. And the threshold for that is that that development be on five acres of land. We don't have five acres of land between these three parcels. It's more like four and a half. And we anticipate that at least an acre would come... More than an acre will come as part to the town. Will be donated to the town as part of this development. So we're requesting, the last meeting, we requested that the five acre threshold be lowered to three. And I believe the planning board then asked for some, a couple items that would make it a little more restrictive so that other B2 properties might not fall into that. Those two constraints were properties that are in the watershed and properties that are within the flight path of the adjacent airport. Moving now past that to where we are today, we find, I believe, in the plan that we now have, Gene, I don't know if you're bringing that one up, that shows the sites. There's a corner of the property that is in the watershed. So that's problematic. We cannot, though, we can't be definitive that the structure wouldn't touch upon that. Engineers looked at it and as described, said it could be 50 feet either way off that line.
That runs, if you're looking at the screen to the right side of the parcel, the length of the side lot line.
We don't know exactly.
Approximate.
Again, I don't know if on that, if that's 50 feet. I can't tell. And when we asked engineers, the engineers looked at it. They said they couldn't definitively say that the struc... That it's... Could be 50 feet one way or the other from that line. But that's the way the line sort of shows on what they could pull.
Is there... Accepting this parcel, is there an issue with carving out the watershed?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure that out.
So we could say that you can't get the waiver other than the parcels identified here if you're in the watershed?
Yeah, I don't know if that's problematic, right? We're calling out one site?
I mean, we're pretty much, we're talking about one site.
I get that, but...
Today's town map of the dividing line of the watershed, does it actually fall right there?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, if you have a...
And that's why we asked the...
So it's not a question of like reengineering and finding that the real line's different than what we thought it was. That actually is, has always been where the line is.
Yes.
I mean, if you're concerned with spot zoning, I don't really have that much of a concern because, I mean, we're building a senior center here. So this, rezoning this parcel has a significant public benefit. And so, and we're... We already have restrictions. We're just kind of lessening them. So I think we're just trying to be as careful as possible. And so I'm speaking for myself. I think this is a great project. I think the senior center here, I think the combined use is great. I think how the town and the... And the developer have even already had negotiations with the neighbors and really are taking into consideration. I know planning board will take into consideration all the things that they said. I think that we've gone from eliminating the waiver requirements to talking about three acres. I think all of that has been great. And so I just want to just refine it as narrowly as possible while still obviously giving, you know, as much deference as we can to the project. So I mean, I'm open, but I mean, I think if we wanted to, we could still make a...
Well, I mean, I've always thought on this that it's... You can define it as the size of the lot when you start, not when you finish. And so we're talking, I think one of our concerns was three acres, but we felt much better with four acres. I don't see why we can't make this four acres and it qualifies because it's part of the lot when you approve it. And if, just because you carve it off later, doesn't mean that's a problem.
I just, I worry about unintended consequences of that and then promoting, cutting off to avoid... I think we're better off if we're comfortable with three, going to three. And if that means not including the watershed, not including the watershed, but also, I mean, I think we could still do...
Well, I mean, then let's go back and let's remind ourselves again where all those lots are. Because my concern is unintended consequence the other way is that something that's too small to carry a tall building ends up getting a something by right.
So why don't we, before we do that, so it is good if we can go back and, do we still have that slide somewhere?
I can bring it up for the last one.
Okay, do you want to talk about the flight path?
I will. I do have one question. I guess we're talking waiver of height. And I would... Would we not want development in the watershed? Isn't it better for them to be taller than wider? I guess I don't know how height impacts the watershed necessarily, other than, you know, it's the size, which you guys all have the discretion. But it's, we're waiving height, and that's just a question I have. With regard to flight path, handed out, and I... We didn't think it was, it won't look good up on the screen, a map that was provided to me from the, Michael Miller, the director of Lawrence Municipal Airport, which lays out the federal air regulations zones around the airport. You can see where I circled, hopefully. There's a little circle. That's approximately where the site is.
Yeah, yeah.
And the difficulty I'm having is that... So there are about six zones, the runways themselves. And then you can see somewhat of a, it's trapezoidal, but they span off the runways, the ends of the runways. That's called the approach surface. And then the ones off of that is called the transitional surfaces. The site, which we don't have up there now, I can tell you... So I went and actually looked at this plan with the director today. And the site is within the transitional surface. If we limited, if you use the term approach surface, the problem with that is the other B2 sites that we're about to look at, only one of them, I think, is maybe two are in the approach surface. The rest are also in the transitional surface zone. So if I limit it to just approach surface, I don't think that's getting what this planning board wanted, which was more limitation on the other B2 sites. I think, for instance, the Dunkin' Donuts, Giant Glass site, the gas station next to that, they're all seemingly, or they are, in the transitional surface, which is the same district area that this site is in. Not all of the site, I can tell you that. It's right at that kind of cross where I've circled around. But certainly parts of, I could tell you, certainly parts of it are in it.
Okay, so let's talk about, so if we went to three, then 999 Oswood and 2302 Turnpike would be eligible for a waiver where they would not be approved? Is that...
You're talking about size of three acres?
Yeah.
So if parcels are contiguous and are in common ownership, which the 1060 Oswood, I presume all four of those are in common ownership?
No, those are, as a matter of fact, one of those is... So 1060 is a mix that has a different owner. 118 Oswood, that's the Dunkin' Donuts site, different owner. 1,000 Oswood is actually a condominium structure. And then 980 is also, that's a different owner. So you have more than four different owners when you count the condominium for those parcels.
So which is 999?
I'm sorry, 999 is... Oh, that's across the street, I believe. Oh, that's also a condo. That's a 13-unit condominium complex, 999. That's the one with John's Interiors and the barn and all that, that... The red barn, you know, it's one structure. But that's a 13-unit condominium.
Okay. Oh, it's, so it is already built?
Yep, that's all built.
So you don't have a problem? Yeah, because that's...
All these are all built.
...to be redeveloped.
Right.
And it has...
And even if it did, that's not really that...
Yeah, well, there's other constraints there with drainage that make it difficult. So it's really...
And the Turnpike Street, that's the one where the new building is going in on the corner of Sherwin's Pond Road, is that right?
Yes, Earthworks at 2302 Turnpike.
Correct.
So actually, I'm glad you showed this because what that says to me is there's really not much of a difference between four and three, given the properties that are out there.
Right, it doesn't mean that something else couldn't be rezoned to the zone, but at least dealing with what we know now.
But the advantage is if somebody wanted to affirmatively rezone, we have, you know, we can...
Exactly, right, right. So then what your suggestion, Eric, is three and then not carving out watershed and flight path?
Correct.
So if people are comfortable with that, I can be comfortable with that. I think if we really wanted to do a watershed, we could maneuver it, but if it's not a concern, then...
So to Eric's earlier question, what's wrong with tall building in the watershed versus a wide building? I would just say, tall building affords more density of use. Watershed is an incredibly sensitive area for which there may be an impression that nothing's wrong until it's wrong. And we really ought to avoid that. So, you know, my druthers is if there's a way to include the watershed, you know, we are the permitting authority for the watershed. And, you know, everybody in this town drinks that all day long. It's treated, yes. It's a precious resource and it's incredibly expensive to undo harm.
Right.
But I, I agree with you, and I agree with you on the broader issue is that the idea is it's going to be higher and broader. It's going to be both. So that's, that's where the problem comes in. But I think if you go back to the list of parcels. That it, it's, it's going to settle itself out is that none of the parcels that are between three and five acres are, I doubt any of them are even in watershed.
Oh, they are, they are in the watershed.
Yeah.
So I'm bringing, I'm displaying this. So 980 is the corner where it just, um, was a, sort of a gas station, I think, and is now mobile.
But the two that were going to be affected were 999.
999 is across the street, so it's the two strip malls there, nine, this calls it 103, but they are condo. So.
But I, I mean.
Is 999 in the watershed?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so here's the zoning for it, so.
Is that the only one? I mean, maybe what you do is to get the, you know, Peter, if, if you're thinking about the parcel that we're looking at, you know, with the KSC parcel, it has a sliver in the watershed. Maybe what you do is if you want to put a watershed living in, you make it, uh, not a de minimis thing, because then you have a problem, then what you've just done is you can't build what you want on, on this, this parcel, so.
Parcel that's more than 50% in the watershed.
It's something like that, yeah. Or more than one acre of the parcels.
So if there's some way to have a protection using that type of method, then I, I think that would be fine. I'm not looking to.
Yeah. No, I mean, I, I think, I don't think practically speaking on 999, there's much risk of anything else happening because it's new, but.
Would also still require a special permit, too.
But you could argue that maybe what you do is you put it in as, uh, uh, you know, it could be maybe, you know, if it's, if there's more than one acre of the parcel in the watershed or something like that, you know.
But to Eric's point, we really don't know, if the engineer didn't know exactly where that watershed, watershed district line was within that property. So if we vote favorable action but amended, we may run into an issue where we, we shortchange this project.
This square footage is pretty small in the watershed, isn't it? I mean, is it, is there work remaining to be done to, because you're going to have to adjust the, the watershed line anyway as part of this. Whoever submits plans on it has to show the edge of the watershed.
But it's what we know now. And right now, we don't know exactly where that line is. Eric said, engineers say it could be 50 feet one way or another. And the, and the way it cuts across that property, that could, that could make a difference.
So to me, the only way to do it, where you know for sure is that you say properties in the watershed, excepting this property, are not eligible for it either. There are, I mean, that does look like you're really favoring one parcel, so legally, I think you're probably okay, but you run a risk. I think we're better, if, if there really aren't, if we don't really see attenuated risks or any real significant risks, I think we should just not put in the watershed and just leave it at three. And I do think these other parcels kind of take care of themselves, but. I know you prefer it and.
I do.
Um, all right, so before, are we going to have any more information other than, is this going to be what we're going to have?
At this point, no.
Well, I know, but in the future. Are we, you know, for town meeting, is there going to be more definition as to what's in the watershed? Or if we wanted there to be more?
I would say probably. I, I assume, you know, there's more engineering work that's going to be done between now and May, and town meeting in May, was that 17?
So I mean, I think.
So, I mean, whatever we have, we can present. I know you meet the night of town meeting.
Well, we meet before, we, we can, we'll still have another public hearing after this on this. I mean, we could, um, approve this as, as is, as requested with the reducing to three. And, um, and yeah, reducing to three, I think that's the only change, and then changing it to B2. And then if, you know, throughout, if we can continue to talk about this watershed issue, if we want to add that in, I don't think that's hard to add in. I think, so that would, that would be my suggestion.
I agree.
Anybody else? Does someone want to make a motion to, um, so I guess with the motion just be for favorable action then, as is?
And then how would, how would we address the watershed piece down the road? I'm not sure I understand.
We can do, we can do two things. Well, we'll continue, I think, I, I think we'll still, even the ones that we voted favorable action on, I would still like to have continued public hearings on. So we can have this on the agenda for next week, have a continued public hearing. We can ask to see if we can get more definition about really how much is in the watershed and if there is. And even if we could get our, some, some opinion from town council about a way to, um, make sure that this parcel's okay, but that we could carve out other parcels. If, if we could get some suggestions, that would be great, because that's what we'd like to do. I think we'd like to make sure that this is okay, that there is little risk to the, to, to this as approved. But to see if there's something else we could do to, especially that 999 or, I mean, anything else in the watershed. So we could continue to talk about that then. If there are, if we do come up with a way to, that we want to change it, we could make that recommendation for town meeting, ask that it be amended, which I don't think would be difficult.
And is there a sense among the board that the board would entertain looking into this watershed piece, even if we vote favorable action on this tonight?
I, I would.
And I've even looking at this, I think there's a way, even if we can't get exact dimensions, there may be a way we can get to, we can add some squishier, for lack of a better word, language, that says, you know, that it can only be worth after considerations of impact on watershed or something like that. But I, I'd prefer to have it be more definite, but I think there's certainly room for that, and I'm open to looking.
Yeah, I am too.
Okay.
Okay, so do, want to get a motion for favorable action on article 15 and 16 together?
Motion to recommend favorable action on articles 15 and 16.
I'll second.
Uh, before we do, I want to ask, again, it's another technical question. You know, I, I asked a question before, is if the zoning failed, the capital budget would go on. But if the capital budget failed, would the zoning article continue?
That's a good question. I, I think we would, I think we would have the ability to.
No.
I, I, I don't know, but I think we would have the ability to speak out against it.
Well, you would. I mean, it's a little bit, the question is, you could argue, you could do it and it would, that would just be, and, you know, at one level, you could make the argument that that's a little bit better because general business is general business, and that's the most.
And there could be other funding sources. I mean, I think that would just have to be, it's a good question, it's a really good question. I think we, it would just have to be decided at the time.
Yeah. Good.
So what is currently in the warrant is, um, just really at the top of this article. So when you make your motion, it's to submit the article as written and discussed tonight.
As to, to amend the section 7.4, uh, to allow a waiver for maximum height for, um, changing the five to a three.
To three.
I think that's, and then change, and then the second one would be the amendment zoning map to change these parcels to business two. Is that correct? That's all we're.
Yep.
And I will amend my motion for that.
Okay, so that's the motion?
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Solar. Do we get, do you want to, do we want to do so? We also have someone from Amerimac College, and I know we also have some people on solar. Would you guys have a feeling of?
Yeah, I'm fully thinking, we'll just, yeah.
Go through solar first?
He's a former party member, so.
So make him wait.
Yeah.
Make him wait. All right. Let's do, so let's just, let's keep going through them, let's do the solar. Just before we get into it, I do think this is one where we're not quite finished. I would certainly be in favor of recommending favorable action on a solar ordinance, but certainly with some clarifications that this isn't quite done yet. So, all right, uh, solar, so, uh, open up the public hearing, article 17, to establish a solar energy systems bylaw, thereby amending section two definitions, section seven dimensional requirements, and add section 8.1 for solar energy systems. Jean, do you want to give us a brief introduction, and then we can go to public comments and board comments?
So, um, to date, you reviewed and approved the vast majority of the article. However, there's still some dimensional requirements left to be discussed, including height of both ground-mounted, roof-mounted structures, as well as pole-mounted. At the last meeting, Dan Larry came and spoke to the board, disclosed some of his concerns. He has formalized those comments in a memo for tonight. So I don't know if we want to hear his comments first before getting into the detail to try to close some of the gaps or.
Do, do people have things that they want to discuss first or, or questions? Anyone? I, I will say that I did some research as to the bond aspect. And I, I'm talking with Shorty Bonds, uh, salesman, who I had, I talked to Shorty Bonds Company, and they're like, we don't really do that, it's really risky, what are the size of the projects? So I think we just have to be careful on this, on the bond aspect. It may be as simple as making it a may instead of a shall and giving the, the board the authority to issue bonds or to require bonds. But if we have to do a bond on every project, it might be tough because I don't know that everyone could get a bond. And we could require some other form of, um, of guarantee, but I think it's, I'd like to give ourselves a little more flexibility there.
This is a decommissioning bond.
Right, this is a decommissioning bond. And I think, you know, I like, I, I know that Mr. Larry had some comments about the size. I like that we've reduced the size because my concern is more in the residential areas and more in impacts on, on neighbors. So I'd like to have the planning board to have more oversight in terms of special permitting. But I also don't want to, certainly unreasonably, I want to promote solar, but just in a smart manner. So I think if a bond is going to be an issue, I think that, that should be more flexible, just like we have flexibility with all the other bonds we sell. So instead of a shall, you can maybe make that a may and.
Yeah, so I think it's tied together. By lowering it from 40,000 to 10,000, you've brought a lot more people into play where this potentially could impact them.
Right. That was just a thought I had. In terms of the other dimensional stuff, I'm, I'm frankly still trying to work through it. And I'm not really ready to suggest numbers yet. But I don't know if anyone, if anyone's got real good ideas on what numbers they want, I'm certainly happy to hear them. But I'm, I'm just not quite ready yet.
Yeah, so I remain concerned, as I was at the last meeting, with the dimensional requirements that are in the current draft. I think that, that as it's currently drafted, after hearing from Dan last week and then doing some reading on my own, I'm concerned that this is not in fact encouraging of adoption of solar energy, which I think is an important thing. And I'm worried that this actually deters adoption of solar with the dimensions that are in there. I remain concerned that we want to protect residential areas, but I think that some of the dimensional requirements are maybe too stringent. But again, I'm not, like you, I'm not sure that I have the right numbers just yet, although I, I do take the industry expertise that we've received, the comments on that. Um, I think those are very helpful. On the bond, I, I did some reading on that as well and, and had the same concerns as you. I also still struggle with the idea of requiring, um, bonds in situations where the, there are smaller developments on private property that to me feels like more of a, you know, we want it in a situation where it's a massive project or on town land. So I, I struggle with that, and maybe moving it from a shall to a may and using it appropriately would, would resolve that. But I, I do, um, I also found in my reading that this distinction between pole-mounted and ground-mounted seemed to be something that was just our reaction to a particular project that we saw. So I don't know that it makes sense, that feels very specific and of this moment. I don't know that that makes sense to build that distinction into our bylaw where it's a particular project we saw. I worry that that's going to become outdated really quickly or easy to sort of build around. I think we stick with the traditional roof versus ground. And sort of keeping in mind the dimensional issues, I'd be open, if people feel strongly about it, to having different sort of thresholds for residential areas versus business uses. But again, I don't, I don't come to the meeting tonight with a real strong feeling on what the right numbers are, other than feeling that what we have in here is, is too strict.
Okay. So the, I'm sorry, but just for clarity, so the only numbers we specified that I can remember are the setbacks for the small and medium ground-mounted, which is what I perceive will be in the residential areas, at half of the requirement for the underlying zoning. So if a side setback is 30 feet for the underlying, we're only requiring 15 feet for the ground-mounted solar.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, let me, let me clarify. I meant the 10,000 as opposed to the 40,000 in terms of the overall space. Because what I, yeah, what my concern is that if you have a business that's coming in and wants to put solar panels or some sort of solar array, that they're going to be deterred from doing so because of all of the hoops they have to jump through to get permitted, um, when it is in, sort of, within the industry's smaller project.
That's the scale of the development, is what I was thinking you were talking dimensional.
No.
So I'm, I'm certainly not tied to the 10,000, just, just when we're discussing that 40,000 just seems so, I mean, that's, you know, a 200 feet by 200 feet, I mean, that's, to, to that be the, the, to be able to do up to that as medium just seem, but I'm not tied to 10,000, you know. We can certainly open to any numbers, that's just why we went, made the change, that just seemed really big. Okay. Comments from the audience? If you could just state your name and your, uh, address.
Eric McLean, 30 J Road, Chairman, Board, thank you. I've been a planning board member before in adjacent town, and I know how difficult this is. I come before you as both a resident and a solar developer and installer. Uh, I own a company that's headquartered here in North Andover, ASolar. We're one of the number one installers throughout New England. As I said, I'm also a resident, 30 J Road. I am a licensed professional engineer and licensed builder, and I come in front of planning boards and zoning boards quite regularly to discuss solar and have done so for the better part of 15 years. I am a pro-solar bylaw person. A town that has a bylaw is great because I know what I need to do to get a solar project. Having said all that, there are some things in this zoning bylaw that do not promote solar, that restrict solar in North Andover significantly. Um, and they go against the DOE R's, you know, general standard. And so I, I'm, I'm going to go through a few comments in general and, and then specifically, and I hope that the board takes them into account. One of the biggest things you mentioned was the solar bond. There, there is no such thing. I've built thousands of systems, no bonding company will give me a decommissioning bond ever, period. And if you can find one, go tell me the Shorty, I'll use them. If you're going to have that language, specifically when you reduce the size to 10,000 square feet of surface area, that's going to affect small business owners and ancillary uses. And there's a difference in solar development between an ancillary use and a single-source use. And I will say that an ancillary use is, I own a parcel that's five acres, I have a business on it, I have a farm on it. I want to put in a solar array to generate enough electricity so that I'm a net neutral user. 200 by 200 is not that big, and is not that big of a solar array that would make me net, net zero, I'll say, right? So then to make that person who owns that business, who owns that property, put in a decommissioning bond that he can't get is way too restrictive. Now, I'm a solar developer. I come and buy 10 acres of land in North Andover, five acres of land, or I lease it, and there's no ancillary use. I'm coming in there and I'm putting in a solar array, and that's it, that's all it's going to be, in the five acres and the four acres and whatever it's going to be, right? I do that all the time. And there, having me put up some Shorty is, I still think, too restrictive. I happen to be a solar developer though, but I, I understand it a little more, okay? The truth of the matter on decommissioning is that you don't require a gas station to put a decommissioning Shorty in, do you? Where in the bylaws does it call for that? I, I'm asking a question, is that, Mr. Chairman, is that required in any of your bylaws?
We don't really do question and answer, I don't know. I think.
It's not that I could find.
There are state laws regarding that and storage checks and stuff like that.
Your, your point is well made on the Shorty, I think, I think everybody's considering it. I like you to move on to some of the other stuff.
One more point on that, if you will. A decommissioning, what we build is made of silica, uh, steel, aluminum, and copper, right? The decommissioning cost in. The decommissioning cost in 20 years, I will make money decommissioning those things, in all honesty, right? There is no cost. I'm not a 300-foot, you know, cell tower, right, that I'm worried about as a town member that's going to be there for 40 years, derelict and can fall down. That's not the case, right? One thing I think I'd like you to consider, too, is carports. The new state regulations, the new state incentive program really gives incentive to carports. I think they're a great ancillary use to business owners and everything like that. They can look real good. Having some guidelines for carports for solar is helpful. And I would recommend incorporating that somehow, if you can.
Well, and Mr. Leary and I spoke about that, too. What would you... See, the problem with carports and a lot of this is that the technology is changing, right?
Changes very quickly.
Definitions are changing. So if we put in a definition of a carport, is that going to change in a few years? And this is one I've been struggling with because I actually agree. Especially after this winter, I'm like, yes, I need a generator and a carport. That's what I need. And I need my carport to have solar energy panels, which sounds great. But to me, it's an accessory structure with roof-mounted solar panels.
So I would say any solar system, though, can be an accessory structure, especially in the residential area, right? They're all accessory structures.
Right.
And in a business setting as well.
No, but I'm saying, to me, the carport with solar panels is... The carport itself is not a solar... It wouldn't come under our solar.
Well, under 310 CMR 1600, a ground-mounted system or pole-mounted system is a structure. It's governed under the Building Code as a structure. I have to meet Building Code requirements, right? It's not... There's no definition of, oh, you're a solar array, therefore you have to do this. It's, no, you're a structure. Meet the structural requirements of a structure. It doesn't differentiate between a building and a ground-mounted solar array, right? Under the Building Code of Massachusetts, I'm a structure. I have to follow those guidelines, right? So if you're going to make a bylaw for solar, you should include all forms of solar, all right? And what I would recommend the board kind of focuses on is things that the planning board should really focus on. Things that are good are setbacks, our vegetative, you know, cover, things like that. Those are good to know as a solar developer, right? So if a carport, if there's already a parking lot, what are my setback requirements for a carport? What are my height restrictions for a carport, right? If... You know, things like that, I think, are helpful. Some specifics that I would think are very important in this is one thing about the 10,000 square feet versus the 40,000 square feet. You define that as surface area. And that's very difficult for me when I'm looking at town bylaws. Surface area is not a defined term. A solar panel is roughly, I don't know, 2.5 by 5. Let's say it's the size of this deck, right? Now, you can say that is all surface area. But I tilt this at 20 degrees. So when I look at rainwater or runoff, I'm looking at my impervious area of just the horizontal part of that, right? Looking down from a plan view. Define what surface area is, right? That'd be helpful.
We define it as the area covered by the surface of the solar energy collectors.
Again, from a plan view or from the entire... The reason I ask is because I've ended up in front of a board like you, and I thought my surface area was 10,000 square feet, and they came back and said it's 30. Because if I laid those all flat, that's 30,000 square feet of surface area, right?
So you have been in the circumstance before.
I've been in... There's not a single circumstance.
So what does the state law say?
The state law says you can't restrict solar use.
But you're talking about, you know, where the bylaw or whatever. I mean, we have a clear definition, I think, in there. You just don't like it.
No, no, no. It's not a defined term. I don't think it's clear enough.
It's not defined in the state. That's the definition.
It's not defined in the state, but it's signed in our bylaw.
I think surface area has a general definition. It's pretty...
Again, though, if you're defining it as the entire collector or the entire panel, then I would want clarity on that, that's all. I'm not sure you are defining it as that. I'm asking, I think you should very clearly clarify whether it's the plan-view surface area of it, like you do for all stormwater calculations, right? I have to... In the state DEP guidelines for stormwater calculations of impervious area, that's how I calculate it, right? I'm unclear in your bylaw.
I haven't think it's a great point, unless it's clearly defined. You can argue either way.
Right, no, we can clearly define it. I get it if the thing's going to be turned on its side, it might be a little bit different.
I would also say that I think it's consistent with sort of other uses in the bylaws. When we have, you know, size of an upper floor of a building, it is the plan view of the floor, even if it's a pitched roof. And if you were to take that pitched roof and flatten it, it would be much bigger
It'd be double.
than that square footage of the flat floor. So I mean, I know that's a bit of a stretch as an analogy, but I actually think, from an engineering perspective, it's a great point that an angled solar panel, you know, what is the surface area? And if it's related to impervious service with respect to rain coming down, it, from an engineering perspective, it's probably the horizontal and not the full angle.
And that's how the DEP requires it for stormwater calculations, to be clear.
And that's fair. And I mean, that's a good insight. It's, you could measure by the footprint as opposed to the flat.
Right, but we had, I mean, those options were all in there. In terms of you can define it in terms of impervious, I just differ that I don't think it's ambiguous. I think you could try to read a different meaning into it, but I don't think it's ambiguous. But I do think you can calculate it different ways. I agree with that.
I'm just thinking back to some experiences on the board where people do read different things into it. It becomes very contentious.
It's not a defined term, right? And so if you're intending it to be, I would clearly make that. Because you can... I've been in the situation where it becomes very different.
Someone could make an argument.
Right?
Fair enough. I can read this both ways. I honestly get the amount of area covered by the surface of the solar energy collector. So you could be talking about the panel itself or the area underneath, area covered by the panel.
Yeah, that's how I interpreted it, but I'm not sure that's how you intended it. And that's why I think you should clarify it.
It's helpful insight, so thanks for illuminating that.
Some other things, I think, you know, and I'm going to go back to the sizing again. And I understand the desire to restrict monstrosorous things in residential area. And I totally understand that. There is industrial area within our town, and I don't think there's any reason to restrict solar modules or solar panels in an industrial area where you can build just about anything else, right? And I would ask the town to rethink about, why would you restrict in an industrial area where you allow, I don't know, recycling center, BFI's, you know, waste-to-energy facility, all those things? Why would you restrict solar in those districts?
You're using the word "restrict", but we have... You're familiar with site plan review.
Absolutely.
Is that a restriction?
Well, when you allow it not to be any more than 40,000 square feet of surface area, I would say it was.
If that's the maximum, if you limit the maximum size, fair enough. But if it's subject to permit...
I'm fine with subject to permit.
Okay.
Having a clear permitting path is very good.
One at a time, one at a time.
I apologize.
So you're opposed to an absolute prohibition of something over a certain size, but you're okay with it?
Do we have it?
We don't do that.
Yeah, I don't think we do.
I don't think we do that.
So a large-scale is an active solar energy system that occupies more than 10,000 square feet of surface area? So just more than 10,000.
Right, so in the industrial district, though, prohibited use, you have for both small-scale ground-mounted solar energy system by itself, which I don't know why you'd restrict that. And then you also have small, medium, and large-scale pole-mounted solar energy system. So you've restricted those two things in that zone.
As a principal use, not as an accessory use.
But why? If I owned industrial land, why would you restrict my use of that at all? Now, you want to put special permit there. I would totally support that. But you've allowed uses of industrial land that are so much worse than solar panels. And so I don't know why you'd restrict that. You are restricting that. In those two cases, in an industrial space, you're restricting it. I understand restricting in residential. I understand restricting in even some business commercial where it doesn't conform or when it might not look good or requiring special permit. Restricting that use in an industrial zone where other uses that are much worse for the town and the environment are totally allowed by right, that's horrible.
But that's, so if we're talking small-scale ground-mounted...
But if I own industrial land, why would you restrict that?
Why would you have a 1,000-square-foot principal use?
Why would you restrict it, right? What if I owned a small parcel in an industrial spot and that's my best use for it?
Okay.
Right?
Fair enough.
On height requirements, and I apologize, I got some... In the copy I have, it's obviously not complete. I would give some recommendations. And I understand the desire and need for height requirements. I think they're a good thing. I live in this town, too. I don't want a 30-foot thing next to a residential area. I'm all for it. I would say on a ground-mounted system, you know, a reasonable height restriction should be, you know, 14, 15 feet. That would be my recommendation to you. That's not an ISO A, and it's doable in the industry, I'll say.
What's the largest you've seen in terms of ground-mounted?
The largest system?
Yeah.
I built a 200 acre... I built a 200-acre site in Nevada.
But I'm just talking in terms of height.
Oh, height? You can get as high as... I mean, the different... You're correct in being able to define pole-mounted versus ground-mounted. It gets very tricky in the industry. And I'll say that also carports as well, right? I can... If you tell me a ground-mounted is prohibited, I'll tilt my angles a different way, raise them four feet, call it a carport, right? If you tell me a carport is prohibited, I'll just build a ground-mounted that happens to be able to have you parked underneath, right? You know what I mean? It's very difficult to define it. I think you should make your best effort to because I think that's important for the town, and it's good for the industry, too, right? Having defined, knowing where, how to get permitting is good.
So what heights have you seen ground-mounted at?
You can go as high as 20 feet. And anything less than 13 feet makes it difficult to build, I'll say. 13 feet is probably the lowest I can actually economically build a ground-mounted system. That's for larger-scale systems, I'll say. A residential system is a little different.
Yeah, I'm actually more interested in residential. So like, if someone's going to have this in their backyard and it's a ground-mounted, what height would you kind of generally see?
Again, probably about 13 feet.
Like the size of a basketball hoop?
Yeah, right.
And so if a pole-mounted was to be combined with a ground-mounted, does 13 feet apply to a pole-mounted system? Can you operate a pole-mounted at that?
Most pole-mounteds are tracking systems, I will say, right? And the economics of a tracking system that has a height limitation of 13 feet probably won't work out. And I understand the desire to restrict that a little bit in residential areas. I would not be, even though I have solar on my house and I think people should have it on every house, I would not be psyched if my neighbor put it within 15 feet of my property line and it was 25 feet tall and it went like this all day long. I understand that. And so, you know, again, though, if you limit just ground-mount, including pole-mount, to 13 or 15 feet, I think you're going to deter a lot of that... A lot of the exact specific case I think you're thinking of, which I drive by every day, making it, watching Make Solar Power, which I love anyway, so... But I can understand how some neighbors wouldn't love that, right?
But by combining it and limiting it to 13, if that's not functional for a pole-mounted, is that unreasonably prohibiting it? Or is there a way around that?
No, I don't think so.
If you just said 15, ground-mounted 15, and didn't define pole, that includes pole.
Right.
Then you just had 15, and there are enough options, it seems, at 15, where you don't have the right to necessarily have a pole-mounted.
Well, you could still, if you wanted to build a pole-mounted, it's just, it's going to meet the requirements of 15 feet, and it's not going to look quite the way that I think your neighbors won't. Or at least there will have to be some limitation of that, I'll say.
Okay.
Can I ask you a really dumb question? Because I had always thought that when stuff that was ground-mounted was actually low to the ground, when you say something's ground-mounted 13 feet, what does that mean exactly?
So typical ground-mounted system will come off at the bottom edge. The panels are always, we're trying to tilt them towards the sun at a certain angle. There's a lot of design criteria. But we'll start roughly 2.5 to 3 feet off the ground so that snow can fall off it in its ground-mounted structure. We'll then put two panels back to back. You can go three, four, five, and that's how you get that higher up. But two panels roughly ends up 13 to 15 feet high on the back end, depending on my tilt.
Is that 13 feet high off of the ground?
On the back end.
On the back end.
On the front end, I'm 2.5 feet.
But 2.5, so you've got a triangle there.
Correct, correct. And so that is a very doable system. And I don't think it's a very obtrusive view to any neighbor. By the way, a large-scale system, however you define large-scale, buffers between residential, I think, fine. I'm not opposed to your 75 feet. I think that's good abutting a residential system. I would say that in some other districts, and I apologize if this isn't the way it reads in here, in an industrial zone, I should fall under whatever the zoning is. Why should I have a more... or less restrictive, right? I shouldn't have a more restrictive, you know, setback requirement because of solar. If someone could build, you know, I don't know, a slaughterhouse there and it can be 10 feet from the road, why can't I build solar arrays that are 10 feet from the road, right? So I would say, and I apologize if that's not the way it reads, but I understand the desire to restrict it with residential buffers, and I would think most developers do. Talked about the financial assurance. I would say if you add financial assurance language, the "may" is a great one. And I would also add, or other forms of financial surety.
That's in there.
Yeah, because what happens is, I show up and they go, "You have to have a bond." And I go, "Can I just give you cash or can I put up an escrow account?" Because I can't get a bond, right? And when the language doesn't allow for that, it gets difficult.
So what have you done other place, have other...
Escrow accounts for 20 years that I fund, you know.
So our language does say that, but...
I didn't think, adequate financial assurance, you're right. I apologize. Sorry, almost done. I apologize. Okay. And this is a pet peeve of mine, but planning boards often put in this that I'll supply... I have to supply an electrical one-line diagram, and I have to meet electrical code. And I always ask, are you going to enforce electrical code as a planning board? Are you going to review my electrical one-line drawings as a planning board? I have to meet Massachusetts electrical code. I have to apply for building electrical permit. I fall under the NEC. There's a Section 690, which is the electrical code. You know, it's not a big deal, but I'd say that it's another... Because typically, I don't do that final electrical design until I know I have a project, right? So you're just adding a hurdle for me to, all right, I've got to go spend a couple more thousand dollars or another few more weeks to do a final design, right? I want to come to you with planning-level stuff. I'm going to be this far back. I'm going to be this high. I'm going to put this vegetative buffer here and things like that. And you say, well, I want... Why do you want an electrical three-line, right? Again, not a big deal, just a pet peeve of mine. Okay. I think my last one is in the annual reports. So I understand the planning board's desire to request annual reports to ensure that the system is being maintained and that it's not defunct or anything like that. I would say that that's a restrictive thing on solar that really isn't enforced in many other industries. Again, someone builds a strip mall, do you make them give you an annual report that they're maintaining it, right? But I understand you may want it. The one thing you put in here that I think is too obtrusive is that you want, for me, how much electric energy I generate in the course of a year. And I would ask you, do you ask the gas station how much gas he pumped? Do you ask the laundromat how many shirts he cleaned? Like, that's my business to make energy. That's... I'm a solar developer, but I sell electricity, period. That's it. And so asking that information, I don't know why you would or what business of yours it is or the town's it is or what you're going to do with that information, right? It's, this isn't town-owned property. This is, I'm a solar developer on private-owned property. Why would I have to, right? I would ask you to look at that.
Where was that?
That's under annual reports, Section 8148.
Okay. I assume we didn't just make that up, so...
No, it's in the DOEAR template.
Oh, okay.
And I know why DOEAR puts it in there because they want to know.
So that's what I'm pulling out.
And if they fund me, I'm happy to tell them.
Okay, all right.
I think that's it. And I appreciate, you know, I appreciate the desire to get a solar bylaw in effect. I support it. I think it's very good. I know it's difficult because it's a technology that you don't see often, that you don't fully understand. I, again, want to... You have a lot of difficult things in front of you, obviously. I've sat here all night. And so I appreciate the position you're in, and I support solar bylaws. I know Dan gave a lot of comments, and I support all of his as well. And I just wanted to bring up a few more, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Very helpful. Thank you.
Dan Leary, 26 Andover Street. I don't have anything to add. I put it in a document. Hopefully the pictures helped, but everything that Eric said, I concur with. And I guess that... And I guess the, the thing that I didn't really get too much into what was, like what's in the explanation is really for us to think about what's our objective and goals as a town that I think is really important. What do we want to encourage? What's, what don't we really want to encourage and, and start from there, so, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Board members, any thoughts on what we've heard or what we'd like to do with this?
I'm glad we heard the comments.
Yeah.
It was actually very helpful because there, I mean, we always knew we didn't know too much about this, but I don't think we really do that, you know, we're not. And it, it feels to me almost like, just I know you guys did a little bit of research, that, you know, knowing more definitely helps because you've got to put the things in context and you've got to understand a little bit better, you might anticipate better some of the potential unintended consequences. And that's the thing is that if we do something, some way, what might happen is a consequence of that. So, I mean, just for me, I'm going to go back and really go over the thing again with a fine tooth comb. It would be, it still would be nice to, I mean, Gene, what, of all the places that you've seen that have bylaws, which place do you think has the best functioning one? And what type of, can you tell like what, how they manage it at all or is it still in the infant stage?
I don't have that perspective. I did look at several bylaws and I did take pieces. So the, the financial security came out of the Beverly bylaw. For the most part, it's, it's pretty consistent with the state model zoning. I mean, there's not a lot of deviations.
Yeah.
The, the size being brought down certainly then impacted other sections of the bylaw. I will say that. And the setbacks is really a hybrid of some of the other bylaws I saw as well as the state. But as far as how the community has reacted with bylaws in other towns, I don't have that perspective.
Is there anything that we think we have a consensus that we want to change? I mean, the bond one? I mean, I'd be pretty open to at least changing that shell to a May, I think, because it's flexibility. And then if we want to do any further, but I think I'm pretty comfortable with that.
But we do have the provision to take cash or escrow.
We do, we do, but it, but it's, but there may be situations when we don't want to bond at all.
We don't need to bond at all.
We don't need surety at all.
So there should be an element of discretion in there, yeah.
Especially with the decreasing to 10.
Right, and then, right. And then maybe, maybe we do, if it's over a certain size, maybe we do, maybe that shell, maybe it becomes a shell.
Maybe, yeah.
You know, but, so maybe we can at least change that to a May for now and then we can, if we adjust the size of the small, medium, large, then maybe we can address.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a little bit more, my takeaway on 10,000 square feet is, in my mind, pretty big. I mean, aside from the fact whether you design it the flat surface or the site, I'm, I could see doing it based on the footprint, not on the absolute size, but we could, we could talk about that some more. But I think 10,000 square feet is pretty substantial. I mean, after all, we require site plan review for, I think it's?
2,000.
Yeah, 2,000 square feet. So we're, we're talking about, you know, maybe it's not as tall, but in terms of footprint, it's just as large. So I think that I, I'm more inclined, keep the, the metro requirements in place, but make sure we have a streamlined process and that we don't do anything that we've never really intended to do.
So I, I think the two things that we should, there are a couple of things that I think we should really all look at and maybe, maybe we can address this one first at the next meeting, because I know sometimes we get, we seem to get to solar late in the night and it requires a lot of attention and kind of thought and by 10 o'clock, I know I get a little tired. So maybe we can do this first. So I think the things that we should all kind of look at and discuss in the next one is the size between small, medium and large. And then the corresponding, you know, not prohibited site plan review special permit. I mean, do we, if, if we could, we could change numbers, we can change things to site plan review to make it a little easier for people, even if we want to keep numbers lower or, or increase numbers and make it more special permit. I think those are the things that are, they're, you know, kind of hard to figure out the perfect answer, but I think we should all kind of come back and try to discuss. I would be content with the shell to the May and then for the warrant, I mean, I would be content at least voting favorable for a solar bylaw with, with a note or some sort of instruction that this is still in the, this, this one in particular is still in the developmental stage and will be, have further edits.
You could say anticipated edits to size, special permitting, I mean, you could even be more specific, so that the board can say like, oh, what do they have their issues with? Oh, their issues are with how, you know, the square footage, industrial versus residential.
Well, let's, let's look at maybe the, I mean, it's the actual.
Right now, it's like, it's a numbers thing. It's like, what number are we choosing?
Right, so we think that we may make edits to 8.14.5 use regulations. That's like the table, you know?
I think we could say, right, the, we anticipate that there may be revisions before this, before town meeting to what, the definitions of the various scale systems.
That's good, that's good.
And the corresponding use regulations.
Definitions, uses, dimensional regulations. I mean, I think those are the major, yeah, I mean, put in an including but not limited to.
So definitions, use regulations?
Definitions, dimensions and use regulations. I mean, we may do more.
This feels to me like we got a lot open.
Yeah.
I almost don't feel that it's right to recommend favorable action, because we're, we're doing it, we're moving target. And I have no, this is a circumstance where we're taking on a really hard topic. It's, it's new in the state and, you know, maybe if we had, you know, remember, we took this one after spending six months working nonstop on one other project. I mean, we're, we're not going to be able to hit the ideal schedule on this one, but that's just because of the broader circumstance.
So our note can really say anything, right?
Yeah.
The what?
Our, our, we can have a note about this, it can, an expla-
In the explanation.
Okay. So I mean, we could say that the planning board is sponsoring a solar bylaw, still in the public hearing and developmental stage and therefore the public, the planning board is not ready to make a recommendation until town meeting.
I would support that.
And look at that.
Yeah.
And because we're sponsoring it.
Yeah.
We want it, but it's not ready yet.
I would support that.
And would you entertain, am I asking one more question of Eric, if he's willing? And I apologize, I know we've spent a lot of time. So my question is.
I'm pro bylaws, so.
My question, it has to do with surface area.
Yes.
We talked about defining it for angled systems. What's the answer for a system that tracks? Because the angle changes.
So the tilt angle is still going to be, there's going to be a stow angle and there's going to be a tilt angle, right? And so?
And that tilt angle is a fixed tilt angle?
No, there's going to be maximum, right? So it's going to vary between 20 degrees and 40 degrees or something like that, right? And so I've seen it a couple of different ways and I don't do a lot of pole mount, I don't do a lot of tracker systems in Massachusetts, I'll say. I've seen it a couple of different ways. When it stows, I don't know if you know this, when the wind gets above 100 and, I don't know, 10 miles an hour, 120 miles an hour, it will go to the stow position, which is completely flat, right? And so I have had, I have had conservation agents or I have had review boards tell me in the past that that's my surface area for calculation of stormwater.
For tracking systems.
Yes.
Yeah. So I just, I wanted to ask this because if we get into that definition of surface area, we probably need to be.
Very precise, yeah.
Precise, is it a tracking system? Is it a fixed system? All right.
There are not a lot of tracking systems that go in, in, in New England, I'll say. As the cost of solar comes down, you do see more and more of them. But they're, they're large, they're expensive, you know, that you just, there's not a ton of them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, I have one question in terms of writing the bylaw. What, what is the more appropriate industry term? Pole mounted or tracker system?
So you can have a pole mount that does not track. So it's a single, it's on a single pole, but if I put two of those, I'm now a ground mount, right? So it gets a little varied. I would say that most pole mounted systems are trackers. That's the reason you have a single unit pole, so that it can turn through at the sun.
That can change.
Not all of them. And that could change very quickly. This industry, I would, I, I think the chairman and the board is right that you want to have very 60,000-foot view of this and not define things too much because the industry changes very quickly. So something you think is applicable now and is a good regulation now can become very restrictive in four years or it can, it can have unintended consequences that allow something in four years, right? So I would, I would focus on things like surface area, setbacks, allowed uses in, in zones and, and vegetative cover, things like that. I would not focus on watts or kilowatts should not, you know, electricity, things like that. It just changes too quick. I've, I've been places where, you know, the, the zoning bylaw required me to have everything underground, but all of the utilities were above ground at my site. And the, and you actually clarify this, because you say depending on what the utility says. The utility dictates how I get electricity, just like anybody else who builds a structure, right? So, but when they did that, they thought, oh, well, we're going to change that everywhere and they, and they passed bylaws that are restrictive years later, right? So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so consensus that we'll put in the?
For me, yeah.
So do you want to make a vote?
So I think that we have a motion to?
I have a motion to enter the comments and the remarks that you stated.
And to, and, but also to vote?
To be made at town.
Vote to be made at town meeting.
That's the motion.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Hi.
Hi.
What would you like to discuss today?
Well, thank you for having me. It's been a fascinating night. It's like old times, old times. My name is Felipe Schwartz, I'm Associate Vice President for Campus Planning and Facilities at Mary McColloch. I was before this board about last year, about this time, talked about the Athletic District Project, where we built a new stadium as part of the Athletic District Project, as well as re-turfed and reconfigured the lower field, which is actually in Andover. Through that time, we also built and just about completed, we're, we should be opening this week, the new restroom ticketing building, that's kind of in that rectangular box on the lower, lower left side of the, of that area right there. So we're, yeah.
And to, for a substantial change, okay.
Yeah, exactly. So that's, so that's just about complete. Now that we're done with construction, we're left with a kind of a rutted baseball field site that we'd like to use temporarily for parking, as well as any other storage of vehicles that we have on campus, whether, whether they be snow removal. Over the past few weeks, we've had that and then we have landscaping equipment as well. But we'd like to just be able to use that land temporarily until we decide what we want to do in phase two. That's, that's really it.
So what is it being used for now?
Right now, nothing.
Or in the plan?
Right now, nothing.
Well, you asked for any substantial change. What are you, you're changing it to parking from what?
It was a baseball field before. We demolished all the baseball field structures, so it's literally open, open land right now.
What was it planned to be?
It was planned to be, when we were here, it was planned to be baseball, but through the construction process, we determined that baseball just wasn't going to work there.
Okay, so the original, the plan was to be baseball, now we're asking it changed to be parking.
Yep. This is a site that's completely internal to campus. Unless you're a drone, you wouldn't really see it from, from anywhere on the, on 114 or 125.
What's?
So the red dot on this?
Yeah.
And that yellow dash indicates the town line, approximate town line.
What, what's your plan for parking? Because I, I know I've, I've been there for hockey games or for soccer clinics and things like that and it's, it's tough.
Plan for parking, I would say the immediate plan is, is really what we're after today. Every year, every academic year, parking changes in some way and it changes for a variety of reasons. Last year changed to really respond to student comments about parking, namely commuter students. We had commuter students that were struggling. So this year, we dedicated one of our largest parking lots for commuter students, as well as another lot. When we opened Crow Hall, the new building, this is our first year of it, that changed the parking demand, the parking location demand, if you will. Previously, people were parking on one side of campus, but when this new academic building opened, now all of a sudden, everybody wants to park right in front of it or the first spot next to it. I would argue that we don't necessarily have a parking problem as we do a walking problem. And my role at the college is to really make those walks in those spaces on campus much more enjoyable so that you can take that three-minute walk, you see where Lot J is at the top of the screen, all the way down to the McQuade Library, which is kind of toward the bottom of the screen. That's a three-minute walk. That's a three-minute walk on sidewalk, on landscape sidewalk, that's uninterrupted by vehicles. Yeah, it's not in front of CVS or some business that's right in front of the door, but to me, we're, we're a campus, we're a small town where people walk. And I think many of us that went to college maybe have been in campuses where people parked and walked. And that's really the culture. In addition to providing other modes of transportation, we have a shuttle, we have Zipcar, we have other, other ways for students and faculty to really come to campus. But we do have an overflow issue. We've been using grass areas at times, but this, this baseball field really allows an opportunity to do something that's a little bit easier on the vehicles, a little bit easier for folks to really get to, get in and out of, as well as provide flexibility.
Do you have to do very much safety maintenance to create parking there?
Just taking dirt out and bringing stone in. It's pretty much ready.
What about drainage?
Drainage, it's all, Jeff can speak to drainage. We went through Andover Conservation Commission tonight as well and they approved. So they, they looked at drainage. We have a site monitor that's working with us on drainage, erosion controls. So he'll continue to be out there as part of this.
We read this this late this afternoon, but it has been reviewed by the monitor and Andover has confirmed that they do not see any negative impact on the drainage, which all does go towards the Andover site.
Right. It basically flows down, it flows, if you look at this map, drainage flows kind of down to the right.
The intent is really to keep the way it's functioning now, the system is relatively flat, so we want to more maintain that.
And the, the, the status of this parking lot, you said it, it will be until there's a determination as to what phase two will be.
Correct.
Is there?
There, there are various ideas. Not yet. Some of it depends on fundraising and partnerships and really priorities, but there's a lot of good ideas out there. So we're, we're exploring them, but in the meantime.
So?
We're just land, we, we have, you know, needs for, for parking, especially for commencement.
So how temporary is temporary?
It's a great question and I think when temporary runs out, I'll, we'll be back here and talk about what that means, but right now I don't have, I don't have a program for that site yet.
Okay. Just, it, it just, I think a temporary parking from a kind of a destroyed baseball field or for a baseball field, I don't really have a problem with that. Is it a substantial change? If it goes on for three years, then it's no longer really temporary and now you have a parking lot that it should have been part of the cycle and that might be.
And we'd come back for that. If it becomes a permanent parking lot, we would absolutely come back for that.
So I'm just wondering if there is a way to put some time limits on that.
I, I mean, you know, with it, it's just, I have to come back and give us an update
I mean, you know, with it, it's just having to come back and give us an update a year or two, or to say our permission to do this is limited in time.
So, this will be formalized in a document that can be conditioned?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know if anyone else has any other feelings about it, whether it's a substantial change or not. I think this seems okay to me as an substantial change.
This is within the work limits of the site that was approved via the special department?
Yes, yep.
But it may be have that condition to come back to us in 18 months to report reviews when they, 18 months, is that work?
Do that.
And everything's outside of conservation's boundaries, right? The red line is...
Yep, we're outside, yeah, exactly. We're outside the 100-foot line.
Did you have any conversation with her?
I haven't yet, but...
And there's no additional utilities, like in terms of lighting or anything, it's just that's what brings...
It's a pretty bright, it's a pretty bright area already with the lights from the stadium, the lights from the lower field. We have pedestrian lights along the walkways as well.
And I take it that it will just be grow, because it looks like, you know, hey, this is a nice striped parking lot.
Yeah, this is literally just...
Just to describe the parking spot.
Exactly, exactly.
Will there be restrictions in time, as you can use it? Could we park overnight there?
We, I don't, I don't see, we haven't even gotten that far in terms of how restricted. Right now, I'm really focused on commencement. This is the first time we'll have outdoor commencement, so this is a really great opportunity to provide nearby parking for commencement, so that's really, that's the big test for us right now.
Do you see public safety issues, using this as unimproved parking with respect to maybe lighting that's not very good?
I don't see it, and I think if that becomes a problem, we add lights on campus from time to time, walkways, off buildings, things like that, and we're happy to do that kind of stuff if there's a need for it. I know we just did that around one of our dorm buildings that lighting levels needed to be improved, and we do that.
So, maybe get a motion to, so what's our, what are we, Jean, what are we looking to say that...
To deem what's presented as an unsubstantial change, conditioned with, if you have any other condition, but conditioned with...
Not to condition with the report about the progress on the site, you know, in 18 months.
So, just report back to the board of the status.
Yeah, the whole site, you know, let's come back to us and let us know where things stand with it, with kind of the whole site, you know, as far apart as one site plan, so...
Yep, that makes sense.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second that.
Go ahead.
I will give the, no, you take the second. I'll third.
All right.
It's been seconded and thirded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Annual Town Meeting Warrant, Articles Four and Five, Authorization to Accept Granted Easements. This allows the town, the Board of Selectmen, to accept grants, easements, and to grant easements as necessary throughout the year without having to come back to town meeting. I think this is on the warrant every year. Comments? Motion to approve that, or to recommend favorable action, is that what we're doing?
I'll make a motion or recommend favorable action to Articles, where did they go?
Four and five.
Four and five.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Do we want to, John, any preference on doing the, going back to the capital plan or doing community preservation first?
Oh, we can do it first. Of course, I rushed out the door, and I didn't bring my papers to share with people, but I think that, I could probably tell the story fairly simply, because there's one large piece of it, and the rest of it is pretty simple. First of all, I think for, does anybody need any kind of little bit of a background on how CPA works and how we do it?
Well, I'm just, just for, I know it's late, but for public benefit of anyone who watches, just if you could, just, I, just because we haven't really had much discussion about the CPC, about CPC, and then especially your role on that, as well as the planning board.
So, I mean, just to recap it is that the CPA funds project recovery areas, open space and recreation, historical preservation, and affordable housing. Those are three areas. And the funding for CPA comes primarily from the 3% surcharge with exemptions for seniors and people who can't afford it, and there's several others, and state matching funds. And then on top of that, in the past, there have been a lot of land projects where we've got private contributions that have helped to fray that. And then in most, in many CPA projects, there's all additional sources of funding, so not all the funding for a project comes from CPA, it comes from private groups, it comes from sweat equity, and a lot of different sources. The process, it's a nine-member board. The process is, it's a bottoms-up process where we entertain applications for members of the community in those three areas, and we meet and deliberate and vote on that. And the one other thing that I will tell you is that the approach we've always taken with the CPA money is that we don't spend all the money every year. So, we'll take in roughly, to give you an idea, this year, roughly $2 million between the state funding and what we take in ourselves, but right now, we have probably a pool of money, of close to $4 million of money that's been, that we haven't allocated in the past. And the primary reason for that was that when you invest in land projects, you don't always know when one's coming up, and so you want to have a backlog of money available because you don't necessarily want to borrow it, you want to take the money right out of cash for it, so you need a few million dollars. And so, it's been a prudent approach, because we didn't want to go and borrow the money and bond it for eight or 10 years out in time. And I can give you the long-term financials that show it, but that's basically the story of it. And that's an important thing for what's come up this year for one of our projects. In terms of the projects, again, and I apologize for not having a list of projects, but I think for the most part, the relative, with one exception, they're pretty much the standard kinds of things that we've seen at CPA.
I think we have them on the screen here, if we could scroll down.
Yeah, scroll down, yeah.
Yeah, I want to give you, scroll down. Great. So, the first one was...
Okay, so the...
First one, there was one that we missed above, which was $80,000.
Yeah, so there's, the first three projects are related to the Historical Society, I mean, not the Historical Society, the Housing Authority.
And it's, Housing Authority has been one of the organizations that we have worked with pretty closely in terms of affordable housing. It's in North Andover, it's very visible. The projects have had, you know, a very big and profound impact on the quality of life of the people living in those projects, and we felt we have a good partner in the Housing Authority. This year, though, we've taken a slightly different approach, is that we've funded two projects, the one that's on the other page, which is for some generators, for one of the, several of the buildings.
Yeah, you could see it, yeah. For emergency generators in this year, you kind of know the reason why, but the idea is to have in the public spaces, to have a place where people can go, where it's warm and so forth. And the other pressing need was for the parking lot for Bingham Way, I think, again, if you go back down on the, go back down on the next page, you got, yeah, it's, you could see the parking lot paper from Bingham Way, it's in bad shape. Beyond that, they had originally made some additional requests, and one of the requests was to refurbish some of the insides of some of the apartments. We wanted, asked them to step back and put together a study of the long-term needs, the long-term plan, very similar to what we did with Stevens Estate, with the Historical Society, and with a couple of other groups. We did that with the playgrounds and so forth. We have a better idea of the long-term needs, we could prioritize them, and we'll have an independent party doing that for us. So, I think that makes a lot of sense, and I'm glad we did it. They're in favorable, favorable and supported as well. The next item in the list, Affordable Housing Trust, is we've been giving the Affordable Housing Trust $100,000 each year. The reason why we give it to them as an open-ended thing is that they invest typically with bread and roses in properties, and the timing is irregular, so we give them $100,000 each year. Whenever, each year, they come in, they tell us about all the projects they've worked, or if they have a new project, they come to us and explain how they did it and why they did it. And I think they've had a good track record in the projects, and I think, for me, one of the things that's particularly important is that it could potentially help stabilize a street that might have a house that's decaying on it, and you could buy that house and refurbish it and make it a real asset to the community. So, that's going well, the Affordable Housing Trust. The playground program, each year, we've been investing $100,000. This year, we decided to do two, both the Atkinson School and Carl Thomas, but we'll continue on a program of doing that year by year. And I think that's a really good example of where there's a very strong cooperation between the town and the CPC. The town is putting the funding in for the maintenance and for routine equipment replacement and so forth in a regular schedule, so I think it's worked out very well.
On those, does the town come and say, hey, this is what we're going to do, we're going to do slides, we're going to do this and that, or is it just we're going to work on Carl Thomas?
Well, it's, each project is separate. We form a community group in each one. The ones at the schools are a little bit easier, because it tends to get driven through the PTO, but in the case last year of Drummond, there was a separate committee formed, and so there's a lot of, you know, again, that bottoms up, people are going to contribute, because the more money, the sweat equity, they contribute, the more the money goes. So, there's an incentive for people to participate actively in the programs, and I think it's worked pretty well so far, so. The next item is the parking lot for Wire Hill. If you've ever been by there, you know there's a lot of, on the street parking, it's a little dangerous, and they want to pull it in off the street. Very similar to what is at Stevens School, it's placed pretty much the same thing.
Which Wire Hill access point is this, John? On which road?
Toward Pleasant Street, the main...
Is this the one right next to the Stevens Pond parking lot?
No, no, it's the one that the, completely at the other side.
So, close to the intersection with Osgood Street?
Osgood Street, yeah, right there, yeah.
And what side of that road is the parking lot on? On the Wire Hill side or the...
It'll be on the Wire Hill side, yeah.
It doesn't exist at the...
Yeah.
Right?
It's just street now.
Right.
Yeah, it's just street.
But sometimes, there's up to 40 cars on the street.
Forty cars there, yeah. I think they're going to make it for like about 20 cars.
Yeah, and I thought the trustees was doing this.
Well, the trustees is the partner on this.
I got you.
They're going to contribute all the labor, all the engineering.
And when will this happen?
Probably will happen this year. I mean...
Well, after they get the funding at town meeting.
We've done a couple, you know, we've done a couple of projects with them in the past where they've provided all of the labor and all the engineering, and the town has bought the materials for it, and it's worked out pretty well.
Yeah. I think there's a corollary benefit here to the watershed and the drinking water supplies, so I just wanted to offer that. I mean, in addition to just the public safety and sort of convenience of being able to hike Wire Hill, there's a corollary benefit to the lake and the watershed that, I know it's not the purpose of this, but it could help. And that, what I'm speaking to is Massachusetts has not allowed dog walking at all of the major Massachusetts surface water reservoirs. It's a pretty significant policy. It includes the Quabin, the Sudbury, the Wachusett, the Foss reservoirs, all of them prohibit dog walking, and it's not because they don't like dogs. I mean, we have a dog. It's because of the deemed concern with public health. So, right now, you know, people can bring dogs on Wire Hill from either this location or the location next to the Stevens Pond parking lot. The distinction I'm referring to here is, you know, if you walk those trails, you can see that the dogs tend to relieve themselves shortly after they get out of the cars. So, when dog walkers approach Wire Hill from the parking lot next to Stevie's Pond, it's very common to see the droppings that are not picked up, right adjacent to the causeway where they wash into Stevens Pond swimming area, which is really kind of disgusting, or through the stone arch where the dog droppings are left, and they then wash into the lake.
Yeah.
Now, if you go further down the trail, you very rarely see any dog droppings, I think it's, you know, most dog owners, I think, would agree that they tend to relieve themselves more often shortly after they get out of the car. So, if there's a parking lot at this new location, and if dog walkers choose to use that, you really have to go some distance before you cross the line into the watershed. And so, any dogs that relieve themselves there, it's washing away from the watershed. So, I know it's not the purpose, I just raise, you know, as a point, that, you know, we're not in alignment with the rest of the state in terms of surface watersheds and dog walking, but this parking lot could have a minor help in that regard.
Help, yeah.
So, I think it's a great project.
That's good, that's actually a perspective that I had.
Yeah, and I would also add that the trustees looked at a corollary policy where they have eliminated dog walking in the trustees' properties where it is adjacent to areas with human consumption use. So, for example, next to farmland, interestingly, they have not yet adopted that next to drinking water supplies like the state has.
Yeah.
But I think this will help, so it's a great project.
Okay, good.
Sorry for the diversion.
No, 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 that's fine. I just want to touch on the Historical Preservation Reserve, that we did not fund any projects directly in the area of historical preservation this year. There was one project that was proposed that was a church-related project, and we decided to pass on that this year, because we went and we read and we read and we reread the law, and we said, we don't understand it, so let's wait until more guidance comes out on that. But we did, we just put the money in a reserve, because you have to allocate 10% of your money for that purpose.
What was the project?
It was at the St. Paul's, the Episcopal Church.
Doing what?
Basically refurbishment of exterior, you know.
Okay, interesting.
So, so the only other one in history that we have funded that's a church-related project is a refurbishment of the steeple at the Unitarian Church, which, you know, in some respects, it's the most iconic structure in North Andover, so it has a certain cachet to it, but we did get a historical preservation restriction for that. So, then it comes back to, you see the $6 million project. It's not the $6 million man, but it's a $6 million project, and that is for the, what are we calling that now? What is the official name for the project?
Right there, recreational complex.
Yes, the recreational complex at the middle school. And if, you may remember, the CPC funded the initial study that involved a whole lot of community involvement, and then last year, we funded the engineering drawings. This is basically, it's come a long way, it's gotten tremendously positive feedback. It's a, really a transformative project that will, you know, create some of the best athletic fields, I think, in this part of the state. But the decision was made to do the entire thing all as a single project and not carve it up over three or four years and start and stop and stop and so forth. The total cost of the project is about $9 million. $6 million was the request from the CPC, and $3 million is coming from a variety of other sources, I think a million and a half from the town, and the rest is from private fundraising, which is a bit of an ambitious exercise. And we had a very robust discussion at one of our meetings about the share of the total, and I think this is something that, in the end, we felt, remember when I said we wanted to save money for a large project, even though it was not a new, new open space buy? This is the kind of thing that we think makes a big difference for the communities, so we're really glad we saved the money. This is, it's not going to wipe out the entire fund, there will still be some money left over. If a land purchase comes up over the next year or two, that's a really critical one, we may have to scramble, but I think we feel based on the math that we can afford this. So, I think it's a, I think it's a wonderful project, it's a phenomenal thing, the amount of difference it's going to make to the whole area.
Is any of that being bonded, or is it all...
Sure, I'll defer to the town manager on that.
The plan now is actually, and I have some packages I can distribute to the group, John's certainly seen them. There's a recommended cash flow associated with this project, both for the CPC, and really, it outlines how things would work through a construction phase, because even single phase, this is more than a two-year project from beginning to end. So, the expectation is there will not be bonding in this case. There won't be a need to bond the dollars. The town's portion of this, 1.5 million, a CPC article was approved by the Finance Committee tonight, as was the article for the town portion of the funding. The town portion of the funding is now coming from a source that needs to be bonded. It's a series of pots, for lack of a better word. Given the cash flow that the CPC adopted when they approved this project, again, it won't be bonded. I think the question would be, for some reason, it was a large-scale land purchase during a three-year period, but the belief is that the cash flow of the CPC over the next three years will be able to absorb this and still leave behind about $1 million each year for additional CPC projects on top of it. It's important.
What's the timeline on this, the field and recreation complex?
Yeah, from a construction cash flow perspective, so the CPC funded the design, $600,000 last town meeting, the design firm has been engaged and has been rolling out various iterations of the plan. I think if we clear town meeting, we'll have a few more public meetings. There's been 15 public meetings to date on this project. Every one of those public meetings are posted, the minutes for every one of those meetings are filed with a clerk and online. I have a package file including a timeline. There's a committee appointed by the selectmen in November 1st of 2016 that's been shepherding this project through. I'd expect another four or five... I'd expect another four or five public meetings post-town meeting to make sure we get everybody's input, and probably a winter to spring bid with late spring, early summer, first shovel type thing, and about a two, you know, close to a, or probably more a 14, 16-month construction because we'll lose some time over the winter. And that's why, if you think of July 1st as the first fiscal year of, of 18, we don't start work on that project till the spring of 19, work doesn't get completed till July, August of '20, you're really talking three funding tranches from the CPC during that time period, and hopefully that'll give enough time for what we believe should be $750,000 from private corporate donations, forming a group that goes off and pursues those kinds of donations, so we're hopeful of that as well.
Great.
So, this is, this is a, a single request, it's, or will this be?
No, it's a single request, but we knew the money, the $6 million, we projected $4.3 million in 19, 700, 850, 850. I think it probably, the 4.3 will be a little less, and the next year will be a little bit more, but we, that's how we base the cash flow, so.
And, and I've seen a, a little bit about this project as it exists right now. Can you describe what kind of facilities will be present? Because my, my concern always with this is just to make sure that the distributed costs have distributed benefits for the community, it's not narrowly focusing one benefit, so.
It's going to be totally, it's going to be a total curling facility?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Indoor, I think, only for curling. Could you describe a little bit about the facility?
Well, yeah, I think probably the best thing to do is to look at the, the charts at the back, I mean, the map at the back, the conceptual layout.
So, there's two plans there, one, as John referenced, one is the conceptual layout, which is what's been developed since, actually started with a working group in 2015, so it's in, in one form or another, over the, close to three-plus years. It'll have a perimeter walking track for all generations and amphitheater to have families get together for small bands to come in and perform, a two-to-five playground, a five-to-12 playground, bocce courts.
Director Brin.
Basketball, you, we'll, we'll talk about that, I guess, in the long term, and then ball fields, baseball fields, softball fields, soccer fields. It's nearly 16 acres in total space here, which is obviously larger than anything else we have in towns in terms of recreational space. So, we see this as multi-generational. We see grandparents taking kids to the parks, grandparents taking kids to the ball fields at the, the various venues, families and individuals walking around a perimeter track. We kid about the fact that most people go to the Common today, but you have to walk around so many times to get any exercise, right? And we, yet we see a lot of people who walk those sidewalks. This gives an opportunity for a quarter-mile-plus sort of walk around a perimeter space. We think it supports not only the general public and multiple generations, but all of the schools that abut it, which are important as well. And so, we, we see this as a multi-generational opportunity that, that really doesn't exist. The opportunity wouldn't exist in a lot of different places, and this is just a combination of positive forces coming together to put it together.
I think it's fantastic.
Yeah. And there were, there were a lot of people working very hard on this. I mean, it's really pretty impressive, the effort that people have put in, and, you know, the, the fact is that it is multi-generational, so they listen to everybody's input, neighbors, people that walk the track, all that sort of stuff, so.
Some of it goes to a lot of fields in town, and who also has run on that track, I think this walking track looks much better than the one that's there now, and I appreciate the playgrounds next to all of the fields, that's, this is well thought out, this looks like a great plan.
The committee's great, there's a list of the committee representatives in there, so you know who they are by name, there's a member of the Board of Selectmen, Rosemary Smith-Daly, there's a member of the school committee, Amy Mabely, there's residents that have different interests, including a member of the CPC, Terry Holland. Again, it's, it's amazing how many public meetings, I think their 16th public meeting will be Thursday when we meet at the, at the school committee, sort of laying out the plan to the school committee. A lot of their minutes to those meetings are in that packet, so you know who they are, the, the cash flow letter that I recommended to the CPC is in that package as well. It really is a great, you know, I'm, I'm here as the voice to what is a really hard-working group that has done most of the heavy lifting on this project.
Okay. So, I think, could we get a, someone want to make a motion for favorable action on this paper, Article 26?
Make a motion, favorable action, Article 26.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And John, thank you for the update, that was helpful and.
Four to four.
Well timed.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, so let's come back to, the last one was the, which we tabled earlier, so we'll reopen that, the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2019. Again, I would hope we could just recommend favorable action on this one for this year with the understanding that for next year, we could take a more active role with the master plan and getting involved in having our thoughts aired on that. More information ahead of time. So, we had a motion, and I second, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Me.
Four to one. Favorable action. Okay, motion to approve the March 20th, before we get to the 20th, do we ever get meetings from this site plan? Okay, so we got to get meetings from the, the sidewalk that we did still. All right, so we'll work on that. Motion to approve the March 20th, 2018 meeting minutes?
Motion to approve minutes.
I'll second.
Motion second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.